Peru Landau said we could start now. Good morning, everyone. This is the public hearing and public meeting of the Committee of the Whole regarding Bills Number 240179, 240180, 240181, 240182, and Resolution Number 240193. Ms. Lawkhead, will you please call the role to take attendance?
Councilmember Squilla, Councilmember Gautier, Councilmember Jones, Councilmember Young, Councilmember Driscoll, Councilmember Lozada, Councilmember Bass, Councilmember Phillips, Councilmember O'Neil, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember Thomas, Councilmember Harity, Councilmember Ahmad, Councilmember Landau, Councilmember Brooks, Councilmember O'Rourke, Council President Johnson.
President. Thank you. A co-mom of this committee is present, and this hearing is now called to order. Ms. Lawkhead, will you please read the title of the resolutions?
Bill Number 240179, in ordinance to adopt the operating budget for fiscal year 2025. Bill Number 240180, in ordinance amending Chapter 19, 1800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "School Tax Authorization to Provide for an Increase in the Tax of the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia is Authorized to Impose on Real Estate; and amending Chapter 19, 1300 entitled "Real Estate Taxes to Establish an Equivalent Reduction in the Tax Rate for the City Real Estate Tax and Making Technical Changes All Under Certain Terms and Conditions." Bill Number 240181, in ordinance to adopt a fiscal year 2025 capital budget. Bill Number 240182, in ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2025 through 2030 inclusive. Resolution Number 240193, providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2025 through 2029 and incorporating revisions with respect to fiscal year 2024, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority pursuant to an intergovernmental cooperation agreement by and between the city and the authority.
Today, we will continue the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole to consider the bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal year 2025, a capital program, and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2030. This morning, we will hear testimony from the Managing Director's Office, including the Office of Public Safety. This afternoon, we will continue the testimony of the Defenders Association and the Law Department. The District Attorney's Office has been rescheduled to a future date due to the District Attorney being out of town, and I thought it would only be proper that he actually come give his presentation as opposed to sending a staff member. Ms. Lawkhead, will you please call the first witness to testify from the administration?
Adam Teal, Managing Director.
Good morning, Adam. How are you today?
Good morning, Council President. Thanks for having us.
Absolutely. Just state your name and your title for the record, and when you're ready, you can begin your testimony, sir.
Good morning, President Johnson and members of City Council. I am Adam Teal, Managing Director. Joining me today are several members of our MDO team. Tara Moore, First Deputy Managing Director, Mike Carroll, our Deputy Managing Director for Transportation and Infrastructure Systems, Vanessa Garrett-Harley, our Chief Managing Director for the Office of Children and Families, Aparna Palantino, our Deputy Managing Director for the Capital Program Office, Aubrey Powers, our Deputy Managing Director for Community Services, Dave Wilson, Deputy Managing Director for General Services, and Crystal Yates-Gale, our Deputy Managing Director for Health and Human Services. I am pleased to provide testimony on the Managing Director's Office's fiscal year 2025 operating budget. The Managing Director's Office works in coordination with individual operating departments to implement the mayor's vision to make Philadelphia the safest, cleanest, and greenest big city in the nation with economic opportunity for everyone, and to deliver efficient, effective, and responsive public services to every neighborhood in Philadelphia that our residents, businesses, and visitors can see, touch, and feel. With that, Council President, subject to your questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Teal, give me an idea of, you know, for me, and that I'm on issue that we're addressing in the City of Philadelphia is gun violence. So let's talk about how much of your budget is geared specifically toward addressing gun violence here in the City of Philadelphia?
Council President, to help me answer that question, I'm going to ask our Chief Public Safety Director, Adam Gere, or other Adam, to join me.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council President, members of council. Council President, to answer your question, the total operating budget of the Office of Public Safety, and we really do think that it is the total budget amount here is approximately $60 million in that area for our total budget. We are taking a holistic approach as an office, so if we're talking about Office of Reentry Partnerships, our work there related to gun violence, if we're talking about the good work that our GVI team clearly related to gun violence, if we're talking about our JAC program, which is our juvenile intake facility, gun violence. That's just our operating budget. We reach into the Managing Director's Office and have contact with some of their portfolio, for example, the opioid response unit, domestic violence unit. We believe that there are strong correlations and ties to gun violence there as well. So it's difficult to answer your question because the, when we talk about commerce, when we talk about parks and rec, all of those, I believe, have a role to play in reducing gun violence, but our specific budget is about $60 million. We are focused on gun violence as one of our top priorities, if not our top priority.
Let's do it this way, because I don't think every department you mentioned specifically has a strategic plan on gun violence, right? Because if I say, let's bring up parks and rec, a partner isn't going to say rebuild specifically, I'm giving you a plan to target those who are most likely to kill or be killed per zip code, right? So that's like really doing a deeper dive, more specifically around how we're addressing gun violence. And so I guess on a more micro level, what would your response be?
Absolutely.
And just to give you past history, the prior administration, we put more than $100-plus million dollars in violence prevention initiatives, but that was such a broad umbrella where everybody received some level of funding, and then they came and said, well, we're addressing it because we're funding all these areas. However, we know we're going to address gun violence in the City of Philadelphia. We have to be strategic and laser-like focused and targeted with resources in terms of how we're addressing the actual issue of going after, as I would like to say, those who are most likely to kill or be killed, as well as supporting their families who are being impacted by the trauma of losing a loved one.
Absolutely, and understanding that and trying to be clear, and we can circle back and try and pull together exactly what we feel is related specifically to gun violence. Again, most obviously, I think our group violence intervention program, our GVI program, would be focused on those who would be most likely to be killed by gun violence or be perpetrators themselves. That total budget, Council President, is $2,340,000.
In terms of GVI, are we planning on expanding it as we move forward? And what's the status, current status of GVI?
We are. So GVI has 19 positions. Again, our total budget is about two, a little under $2.5 million. We are planning on expanding. We've seen the success of the GVI model. I was out there a couple of weekends ago, where for those of you who don't know, these individuals who we identify with the help of law enforcement, we go right to their doorstep. We try and engage them, we bring with us moral ambassadors, we bring credible messengers, we bring members of the police department, we bring our own team who offers social services immediately. We think that this has an impact on gun violence because we're offering people what they need, right? We're meeting them where they're at, whether that be mental health treatment, whether that be employment opportunities which we can set up in very short order, that matters. And we are, we received a federal grant with help from some of our federal partners, Mary Scanlon in particular, brought home about $600,000. That money is going to be targeted specifically for GVI programming around youth, right? Around our youth. So we're going to be bringing on with that money five positions. These five positions will be dedicated to our GVI program, again, as it relates to youth. We already do, by the way, look at youth in our current GVI program, so if they get on law enforcement radar and become a part of that, we look at them, but this will be monies specifically targeted. So we're going to expand that up, and we're going to continue to expand GVI in general.
Thank you. How many police districts are we in right now in terms of GVI?
We are currently in 17-plus police districts.
17 police?
17, correct.
I didn't hear. You said again, 17?
17, I'm sorry, 17 police districts.
How many are we looking to expand until, in terms of utilizing GVI as a strategy?
I would have to get back to you. I mean, it is my goal to obviously be citywide with GVI. We do understand, though, with our resources and with the Commissioner's plan that, and by the way, our GVI program is aligning with the, with our public safety plan, we are following that evidence and see that, as per the report, the 10 districts, right, that we're going to be focusing on, but we're going to be aligning our resources, including GVI, with that. So we will continue to make sure that we are there to address that 70, 80% of the violent crime that's occurring in those top 10 districts, but it's our goal to absolutely be where we, where we can be, and hopefully that's everywhere. So I can specifically get you how we want to scale up.
All right, just report back in terms of how we're going to go about scaling GVI. Another question regarding community expansion grants. I know last year, there was $24 million appropriated, about $16 million was actually spent. Again, it's flat. This year, again, another $24 million for community-based organizations. Is there any plans to look at how we provide multi-year funding from expansion standpoint? I know the plan right now is a combination of, as y'all would say, pie, prevention, intervention, enforcement. Majority of both components is the enforcement, because that's what we're supposed to do as police commissioner. I want to talk more about the prevention and intervention side, right? Looking at how do we scale the support that we're providing for boots-on-the-ground organizations from a funding standpoint, because we're remaining flat, and then also the back office support that a lot of these organizations need in order for them to utilize the funding that we're giving them. But obviously, I don't want to paint a broad brush, because we have some successful organizations who are out there doing their work day in and day out. So have we looked at a multi-year funding standpoint to help stabilize these organizations?
Council President, I think that's a great idea. I think that's a great point. We are looking at all options to sustain and understand the organizations, and there's many, right, that are doing, that are doing great work. And so we need to lean into those organizations, assist them in scaling up, finding out what their successes are. And then frankly, if there are some organizations that we're finding aren't being as successful, can we help them along? And if not, then we might have to use our money on some of these organizations in scaling up that we know are working. So I, I think right now, the way it operates is these organizations can reapply and we'll look at them. We, if we're seeing success, then they will get another, another round of grant money. I think we can be more intentional about that. I understand your point that there, there's something to be said for consistency for these organizations and them being able to build out like a two, three-year plan, right? If they're just going from cohort to cohort, that's, that's difficult to think long-term and include that into their strategic planning. So, so I understand that. We are, by the way, going to be hiring out a director of grants position. So to answer your question in terms of our level of funding request, we're looking for an all-star here, obviously, a grant person who's going to be going out and looking for the money.
But separate from the grant, and we'll advocate as we move forward during this budget negotiation process, but we want to start with the money we already have, right? In terms of upcoming budget right now. So the grants are what we could get, right? But I'm advocating for expansion, additional funding beyond what's already appropriated. And I know part of the conversation will be, well, we did 24 last year, only 16 was spent, but again, we're in a crisis, we've got to address this with a sense of urgency. We're not going to rest our way out of this situation, and so we want to be very proactive in terms of supporting as many, what I would call, you know, grassroots boots-on-the-ground organizations as a supplement to what's going to be taking place from a law enforcement standpoint. And the other component is, just to be more direct, and the last administration did have, so I want to say, within this administration, under your first 100 days, did we recruit a organization to come in to help with the back office work that the boots-on-the-ground organization needs? Like, we should already have an organization up and running to help these organizations, rather than assisting with paperwork, assisting with doing their taxes, but building their capacity. I just want to get an idea where we're at from that standpoint in terms of hitting the ground running, because we know what's coming around the corner when the summer comes. And so if we already know what the summer is going to bring, just being proactive as much as possible, just want to get an idea where we're at in terms of have we partnered or brought in an organization to work with these groups as of yet?
Council President, again, that is, that is astute. We want to scale up responsibly. We need to, as we say, understand, right, and learn from the, from any mistakes that the former grant round applications, however you want to look at it, we want to understand and learn from that. So we feel we're positioned now to scale up responsibly. We, we feel like we're going to be able to do so, though with great effect, right? This cohort that's ending, actually, we extended the cohort application for our next round of grantees until today, because there were six more organizations that wanted to get their applications in, and of course, we want to take that in, right? Each of those grantees who we're going to give out in this next round of cohorts need to start by June 1. They need to have plans for June 1 for the summer programming. Those grantees must also have a focus in their plans starting June 1 for the youth, right? So we've already got that ready to go. We're going to have those in operation, like I say, June 1. The Office of Children and Family, who we partner very closely with, has all of their summer programming for, for the youth in particular, as I believe the Commissioner has testified to already, and she is present here if there's any further detail needed there. But we are going to, we're prepared, we're preparing for the summer, we will have our grantees up there. We also, to your second point, in learning again from some of the challenges that we faced prior to the Office of Public Safety, we brought in Scattergood to provide some of these supports for our grantees. Scattergood Foundation, correct, Scattergood Foundation.
That's all I was really asking. Do we have an organization that comes in and give these organizations the support they need in terms of their back office? So we are working with someone.
Correct, and we can do more, and we can do more, and we will do more.
That's cool. And we had to be supportive, but again, we on the ground, and we, and we having these conversations, a lot of these groups are actually like doing the right things for the right reasons. This is the type of support that they need, and I think it supplements the work that we're doing on the enforcement side. And your budget is $5 million to clean criminal justice debt. Give me an idea of the current spend of those funds, how many people have been impacted by the clean criminal justice debt, $5 million that's being requested?
I'm sorry, is that the crime scene cleanup?
Yes.
Program? Oh, thank you, Council President. So the, we are in the pilot period of that. We decided to pilot in the 24th, and we did that on purpose, because we anticipated that that might be an area that particularly might need this service. For, for those who don't know, we will be the first major city, and I'm very proud to say that, we will be the first major city, city period that I'm aware of, to publicly fund cleaning up crime scenes in public areas when they've occurred, so that our communities who are suffering from the trauma don't have to deal with at least that visceral trauma and have their, their children and family members literally cleaning up these scenes. That's our responsibility as a city. We feel very strongly about that. That $5 million is spread out over three years to accomplish this goal. To date in that pilot program, thankfully, and I, and I say, thank God, we have not had to use it in the 24th. That means that there was no violent crime scenes that would require this cleanup process. We did, though, have to use it at a recent shooting where two juveniles were shot near a community rec center. Fortunately, they both survived. They were in a public space, they ran into the public space, that rec center, and but for, and so that crime scene cleanup program with public dollars cleaned up that crime scene, right? But for that, who knows who would have cleaned it up and had to face that trauma? But these are professionals who are coming in, we give them trauma treatment, and they're doing, I think, great trauma-informed work.
Okay, thank you. Office of Victims Advocate, just want to get an idea of current operation, where we're at in terms of reaching out to mothers and fathers, lost loved ones, the gun bonds, how are we going to expand the level of support to address families who are dealing with trauma here in the City of Philadelphia, as well as initiative where we looking to expand upon those who are available to receive funding when there's a homicide that takes place? I know Adair Combs, who has the office, did some advocacy on a state level to try to open up the window to support and not penalize a family who needs funeral support, support to host a funeral, irregardless if their kid was involved in some level of gun bonds. But we want to look at what's the future, and what does, what does it mean for the office in terms of support around supporting mothers and fathers who have lost loved ones to gun bonds?
It's a tremendous office, under the tremendous leadership of Adair Combs. Currently, there are, there are four positions, total budget is about $1 million. Council President, they are doing incredible work with their, with their team. They are going to state, they're interacting with the state all the time to try and get the money that is, frankly, there's a lot of money out there for victim services, they're doing a good job of bringing that in. They're doing a tremendous job of reaching out to our families on both sides of this, right? We know that often the individuals who are the victims of gun violence might be on the other side of that, right? And they don't care about that. What they're trying to do is deal with support and trauma-related support and financial support for co-victims and those victims. They recently started a outreach, right? Every single person who is unfortunately the victim of a homicide, their families are contacted by the Office of the Victim Advocate, and they do a, they attempt to get them to every service that they can, right? They, it's a list of services, and they will walk them through that, their information is there. So we, we believe strongly in that work, and I think that there are plans to add to that office to, to help continue further their mission in terms of, in terms of positions.
Ms. Combs, could you come to the front, please? Join the table? Just briefly, Mr. Combs, just give us an update on since your office has been started, some of your key milestones on the advocacy standpoint, and then also the work you're doing around trauma and addressing families who have lost loved ones to gun bonds. And then also, I want to get an idea, I know the Commissioner isn't here, but Adam, as well as, well, I got Adam and Adam. I ain't think about it that way. But Adam, Public Safety Director, Adam Gere, how are we also making sure we're coordinating with the new position that's going to come under Commissioner Bethel, but also making sure the actual victim advocate for the City of Philadelphia, first of its kind in the nation, right, still takes the lead, and there's a coordination in terms of how we provide the level of services and support as relates to supporting those families? Because I believe hurt people hurt people, right? And one of the key ways that we're going to address gun violence is that when that person gets, somebody getting murdered, and the family members and the friends decide to go murder the person that did the murdering, that intervention would also address that trauma, hopefully will alleviate two people from, or two groups of friends, or two guys from different neighbors trying to kill one another. But Ms. Combs, give us an idea of your milestones, where you're at, and what the future of your office looks like.
Absolutely. First and foremost, good morning, Council President, and to our other Philadelphia City Council members. It's an honor to be here and speak on behalf of the Office of Victim Advocate in service to the City of Philadelphia. So to go to your original question, which is where we began, so as this esteemed body knows, it began with just me being appointed to this role. Since then, two years later, we have additional staff, we have a deputy director, we have an administrative coordinator, and we also have a relocation program coordinator. The reason why I mentioned that position specifically last is because, as this body also knows from previous hearings, there was funding allocated to relocate individuals who are experiencing imminent danger as a result of gun violence. There was a special hearing on that, and a lot of different conversations regarding how we were utilizing that money and how it would be utilized effectively. I'm proud to say that since this office was created, despite the fact that those funds were allocated prior to the existence of this office, we have developed a program that has been utilized not only by citizens, but also by victim service agencies, by the police department, by our GVI team, and a lot of other entities in the city. To date, within this fiscal year, we have relocated 19 individuals to safety. Some of those relocations have gone temporary and have been relocations while the harm was abated or the danger was abated, but eight of those relocations have been permanent relocation, where individuals have been able to find permanent housing in safe locations. And while in the grand scheme of numbers, 19 does not sound like a high number, I think it's important to remember that is 19 individuals who are previously being targeted, who are now in safe locations. And while we don't, we pride ourselves on this program, it's certainly not a program. We want to see have high numbers, because that means there's a high amount of people who are needing to flee their homes to safety. So I'm proud to say we have that program. We have a relocation coordinator who is charged with ensuring that those families are handled with trauma-informed care, they're connected to services. In addition to providing housing support, we're also looking to expand that program to provide some additional supports that we know those individuals need. When I say that, I mean things like food insecurity, job security, credit repair. A lot of the issues we see are individuals who may have the means to relocate to safety, but don't have the actual background to indicate that they're otherwise eligible for that housing. And as we know, we are in a housing crisis here in Philadelphia, so trying to support those individuals to make sure that they have those things in place to maintain that housing, because moving someone to safety without some longevity is quite honestly futile. So that is one milestone that I'm proud to say that we have been able to accomplish with such a small team. In addition to that, we have been able to pilot our crime scene cleanup program, which is intended to remediate crime scenes that are on public property. The pilot district is actually the 25th district, and we are proud to say that to date in the last, I think it's the 16th, since it piloted on April 1st, we have not had any incidents on public property that required the cleanup, but we stand ready to provide those services if needed.
That's just similar to the initiative, Adam, you just talked about?
That is the initiative, yes.
Okay, cool. So it's $5 million that's appropriated that's just, that could be used in the future, correct? For this initiative?
Yes. So the plan right now, in partnership with Police Department, we are working literally step in toe with them to train the officers, to develop the programs, to make sure every level of the Police Department and all of our community agencies are well-versed on what we'll be doing. We started in the 25th district, we plan to expand within East Division, and after that, move division by division until we're citywide. So that is the goal that we have. As Director Gere indicated, we did deploy the service one time, not in the 25th district where we're piloted, but to the West Mill Creek Recreational Center, and we were able to see that play out. And what I'd like to say to this body is while, excuse me, we can't predict how often this will be needed, and obviously, it's not something we desire to be needed. When I was there on the scene last Wednesday myself, myself and my deputy director went to that scene to make sure it was done correctly, there were community members, it was a bright sunny day, I think it was last Tuesday, and there were community members walking over and through the blood as if it was not there. And I think it's important to remember that these communities are becoming numb to what is happening to them. So it is on us to ensure that we're providing services to make sure that doesn't happen. People tracking that biohazard matter through the day into their homes is obviously a safety concern, that as a city, we certainly can't stand by. So those are certainly So those are certainly two programs that we are proud of. In addition to that, as Council President indicated, we have been doing a lot of work to make sure that we support the victim service agencies that are present in the city and make sure that they receive the funding that they need. There was recently a cut that was voted on through the Pennsylvania State Commission on Crime and Delinquency to the victim service agencies. And what that translates to is that each and every victim service agency that is funded by the state will receive a cut come October 1st to their budgets. That will happen. It's not a maybe, it's not a guess. It absolutely will happen. That will directly impact all of your constituents and all of our community members to the tune of 5%. And while again, 5% is not a high number, that is a position, that is a program that supplies, that's a lot of different things that these agencies need to survive.
Let me put a pin in that just real quick. So Adam, this is good while we, we have these hearings, right? So we could be supportive of one another. So what I would recommend as members of council, we submit our priority requests to the appropriations chair in Harrisburg, as well as the mayor is going to submit her priority request to the appropriations chairman in Harrisburg. And also we're working together, the mayor and I, and so we should be on the same page saying if we can stave off these cuts because we're asking for this type of resource and support as a part of our priority request, then maybe we'll have an opportunity. They're still going through the negotiation process, so maybe we can stop this ahead of time, working together. So this is very, very important information that I had no idea was actually happening. And we just had an intergovernmental meeting the other day with the administration, members of council, Congress and both appropriations chair, but this wasn't brought up as a key issue that we all could be working on. So very, very valuable information.
And also just to add to that, to add to that, my office has been convening all of the PCCD funded entities within the city in Philadelphia. So those include organizations like all of the community based organizations in all of your districts, a mere healing center, a mothers in charge, senior law center, CARRY, the DA's office cares unit, all of those entities that are going to be receiving that cut to do some collective advocacy to make sure that we can not only secure funds to kind of gap fill the funding that they will lose come April, October 1st, but also to make sure that we're increasing their capacity. Because as we ask more of them, we have to give them more to do the work that they need, need to be doing within our communities. So we are seeking to not only actually support them, but also fiscally support them as well in the work that they are doing. And to answer your, your next question in terms of the future of the office, in addition to the programs that we already have, as Director Gere indicated, starting, I want to say in February, we began to send out letters to all of the family members of homicide victims. And although that is not a program per se, it is, it is an initiative that I'm proud to say we are doing. It's a small gesture, but it goes a very far way. Since that date, we have sent out 64 letters to those families and we'll have another batch going out this Thursday. And what those letters basically say is that as a city, on behalf of myself, my office, as well as Mayor Parker, as well as the city of Philadelphia, we offer our condolences and support. In addition to that, we have a two-page resource guide that provides information to all of the agencies that are available to them, whether that be community based agencies, the police department, the medical examiner's office, the police department victim services unit, or victim assistance office, I'm sorry, the cares unit, everybody you can think of, DBHIDS that folks may need, that they don't have the information for, that's contained in that letter. And while yes, we know individuals receive a lot of information after someone has passed away, in my viewpoint, as well as Director Gere, as well as Mayor Parker, this offer of our condolences and support to us is a showing to the community that we do care and that their loved one is not just a number, but rather a person that we will miss in our community. So that's an initiative that we have.
Go ahead and drop that mic. Sit. I want to acknowledge two key parts of what you're working on, which shows progress that this body has been doing. Councilman Curtis Jones held hearings regarding witness relocation. And some people don't know that the relocation that you're doing is separate from what the district attorney's office was doing. There was a need. You also talked about helping people get permanent housing, also something that Chairman of Public Safety worked on as well. And the cleaning up of crime sites had a hearing around. I didn't even know that was a thing at the time, right? Guys, just growing up in the neighborhood, it's not, just being quite frank, seen plenty of people, just being honest with you, since 12 years old, being murdered in the streets of South Philadelphia. So I didn't even think of what the thing about, they never come to point in South Philly and say, we're going to clean up this site. It just, it is what it is and life goes on. So I think those key initiatives that you're working on, I think is great. I think reaching out to the actual families, that goes like a long way from the healing standpoint. Cause we still have people coming down to council advocating every now and then saying, we're trying to deal with a cold case or how we get a follow-up and work in partnership with detectives in terms of getting some closure after losing a loved one. And so thank you for that update. I'm very relaxed my time to the members. I just have one small question regarding, and this is for Mr. Adam Gere. Thank you, Adair Combs.
Thank you.
And my last question before I relax my time is, are we, well, I recommend that we explore two things. One, in this budget, is there expansion for funding for the Safe Passage Program with the school district of Philadelphia? Making sure children are safe going to and from schools? Are we expanding in this budget? Is there funding for that?
I would have to check specifically. That's a program that's with the, the school district. It's contracted with the school district and the police department. So we would have to look in and I'm not sure if we can quickly figure out whether there was an expansion for the monies for that. We have in TownWatch integrated services within the Office of Public Safety, a, a program that's similar where we identify corridors for school aged children who are walking to and from school. That funding is level.
That funding is level.
That, that funding is level for that program, but that's the program personally as, well, professionally as the Director of Office of Public Safety, I think what we're trying to capture and, and focus on is the older individuals who are in and around school, schools who may be subject to this, this type of gun violence. The safe pathways that the TownWatch Integrated Services runs in my shop, it's for younger.
Younger ones?
Correct, correct. So I think we would want to look into the numbers as it relates to the other program with the police department and the school district.
And then last, have we looked at, how we can reset TownWatch Integrated Services? At one time, TownWatch was very, very heavily inside the community under the managing director's office, was different than a traditional come outside, walk, you talk, as well more from an intervention and prevention standpoint, you had significant amount of workers in different neighborhoods throughout the city of Philadelphia doing this work around public safety. Could we consider re-looking at that model from a prevention and intervention standpoint? And the same thing with Philadelphia Anti-Drug Anti-Violence Network. Most of the social media beefs end up inside the schools and spill out into the streets. And rather it's the school district partnering and contracting with Philadelphia Anti-Drug Anti-Violence Network or other organizations that are boots on the ground. We have to have more of a presence inside the schools to try to help resolve the conflicts with our young people before they get out in the streets. And so I know some of it is the responsibility of the school district, but we lead as well from a city standpoint in terms of convening, getting everybody at the table from a resource standpoint, seeing how we can fill in the gaps. Because if we're not inside those schools, I think we'll continuously see the same issue on and go on and on when it comes to our young people. Just something to consider and to think about.
Agreed, Council President. Yes, it's the short answer to both those. We're going to look at both those, but yes, the, the short answer is yes.
Thank you. Relax my time. Councilman Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two quick questions. Are you on CJAB and is the Victims Advocate also on CJAB?
I'm not sure if the Victims Advocate is. We are on CJAB. The mayor's needs to, will officially appoint me to CJAB, but I'm in contact with Judge Dafino Nastasi. We were invited to the last CJAB meeting. We have those memberships. It's just me officially being appointed, but yes.
Because as we anoint you as the straw that stirs the drink, that is where the drink is. You have all of those different department heads and when somebody does something, an initiative, if in Kensington, we do a massive enforcement piece that affects the prisons, that affects the health systems, that affects the courts, so that all of those things are anticipated in a, in a way that they can adjust for. So I wanted to make sure of that. Couple of things. One, have you begun measuring the boots on the ground grants and their effectiveness? We are pleased that crime has gone down. I think it's 30% or better, but who, what, how that happens, we need to kind of get more information on so that we can reinforce those programs that are working and then maybe adjust the ones that are not. So those kinds of datas, bringing back to this body is essential. If we're putting up that much money, we want to know what is working and what needs adjustment. So if you could, could do that, that would be helpful.
Yes, absolutely. We, we have had independent evaluations of our, of our grant program. Either they have been completed or are in the process of being completed. We hired, rather the, the previous administration in response to some of these challenges, hired two grant analysts to specifically look at this. I personally have brought on our chief operating officer, Marcia Dixon, who is absolutely incredible and has a, not only a strong financial background and eye, but also comes from a public safety background as well. She is looking at this. We're bringing in a director of performance management. That'll be a new hire to look at this. So we, we absolutely, it is a priority of my office to make sure that we are understanding what is working, what is not working and being fair and also supporting these organizations, how we have to support them so that they can be in the best position to succeed. And we will bring back that information to council as we receive it.
And thank you both for elevating crime prevention and gun violence to a prominent level and you have been working on the blueprint for a safer Philadelphia and thank you for that. You all have the questions, you're responding in a, in a tremendous way. A lot of those things are being implemented as we, as we speak. But one of the ones that I really want to get insight on is we have a school to prison pipeline. How do we reinforce and create a school to paycheck pipeline? Example, the fleet management, I think a third of their workforce actually comes from public schools, CTE schools, Randolph School and are filling the ranks. We have a problem with filling all of these positions. So if you can't find outside workers, let's, let's grow them from particularly a at-risk population that otherwise might find their way into problematic careers. So I know fleet management does it. Can you talk about school to paycheck pipelines that we are creating?
Council member, Council President, this is certainly a topic that is near and dear to, to my heart and my former role and, and now, looking across the entire breadth of city government. I know in my prior role, we, with help from Mayor Parker and her prior role, we doubled the size of our explorers program by getting them a dedicated facility. And we've really seen the fruits of that already in FIRE. And the FIRE department also has a program at the Randolph School, another program that frankly, at various times has been, has been challenged to recruit students. That program is going great now, that partnership with the school district. And the police department, of course, has a huge explorers program as well. We have the program in fleet. We have Future Track in Streets and Sanitation. We have a lot of different programs across city government and I think we need more. Certainly the municipal university, a great vision of Mayor Parker's that we're really excited to get going on with the community college. And actually I just read a, read an article about the, the current generation, and I have a few of those folks at home, well, not really at home, are very interested in the trades and very interested in, you know, maybe less interested in going to college and, and that really resonates even with my experience. I didn't know what I wanted to do and I just sort of stumbled into what turned out to be a career for me. There's a huge opportunity here. So I think as we're building the municipal university, we're continuing to leverage and double down on these programs. Another one that's been huge for us is we've been talking with a lot of healthcare providers, healthcare systems is here is the city of Eds and Meds. There are a lot of healthcare opportunities that are available. Another thing we experimented with in my last job, we had a community EMT program with 1199C. We had a community EMT program with Drexel's Dornsey School of Public Health. We had a community EMT program with, with WHIPSY, with the West Philadelphia Skills Initiative. So I really think the sky's the limit. I think certainly the time is now. It seems like there's an appetite for that. We do have unfilled positions across all of city government and I believe that working together in a collaborative way and intergovernmental way, which is what Mayor Parker is demonstrating, we can get this done. There were just a number of opportunities released in the past couple of days from the federal department of labor for apprenticeship programs. We know that working with the building trades is already something we're doing. So I'm hopeful that this additional federal investment plus all of the work that we're doing will continue. We need it, we need it now. We need folks to fill these roles, not just for today. And talking with the healthcare folks, this is a four, five, 10-year pipeline. So we really do need to be filling that pipeline today for jobs that we may not have been thinking about are in scope.
One of the things that I would encourage, that really there's a finite amount of young people that are, as they say, off the chain. Might be around 5,000 folk out of the population. I, I want to encourage us to create year-round jobs for that population. Everybody's not going to take advantage of that opportunity, but if 50% of them did, what would it do to our crime rate? And as a part of GVI, that, that is something we offer them when we, I've gone on those walkarounds and after the participant gets beyond disbelief that they're not going to jail that day, you know, they start to open up to the possibilities of some of the positive things that might be offered. So if you said to me, you can get off this corner, I'm going to give you an opportunity to have a year-round job so that you don't have the reason to, to do what you do, that might be an incentive for folk to do the right thing. So if we could see, I, I know there's a year-round possibility. Do, does anybody know how many jobs that is and if we can expand that?
Well, we know that Office of Children and Families during the summer programs this year, a number of those summer jobs are going to lead to full-time jobs and we can get back to you with exactly that number. I know our, our chief deputy managing director has that. Parks and Rec, I think, has other jobs that, you know, that's a pipeline. Future Track is intended to be a pipeline. As we expand Clean and Green, you know, this is another opportunity that we have for the Philly TCB folks, CLIP folks, for them to ultimately turn what are, you know, entry level jobs into career jobs. And part of this, I think, is the-
Can I get a point of information, if you don't mind, Member Jones? Go ahead. We cut CLIP by a million dollars, so can you give us an idea why? Cause that is a, an easy entrance way into the Streets Department and we normally recommend folks there irregardless of their record, but I know the whole mission is Clean and Green. And so members have been asking that for a while, especially Councilmember Mike Driscoll. Can you give us an idea of how is that, how cutting it gets us to where we need to go?
Council President, since that is in the, the Clean and Green Initiative, we'll have to get back to you on that from our Director of Clean and Green Initiatives, Carlton Williams. I don't see him here today, but we can certainly get back with you on that. Obviously, there is a huge investment in Clean and Green and some of the, let me see if I can find a spot here. Some of the, what you're seeing as cuts or what you're seeing, what look like cuts are actually transfers or reinvestments in other areas. So I think the, I don't think, I know that for Clean and Green, the net-net on our Clean and Green Initiatives is definitely plus, plus dollars, plus equipment, plus people. We're going to be coordinating these folks. So my sense is that probably looks like a cut because of some of this movement. We are absolutely going to be investing not just in the equipment and the vehicles for Clean and Green, the people with an eye towards ensuring that those, a lot of those folks that we're going to be hiring, whether they are, I mean, part of this is putting everybody under the same umbrella. So regardless of how they're hired, we want them to get into these city jobs that have not just pay benefits. I think this is another part of the conversation that we're missing. When you look at the total package, it's not just about cash money. It's about a pension and it's about health insurance. And I think we need to have that conversation more holistically with young people because if it's just about cash, that can be difficult to compete. if it's just about cash, that can be difficult to compete. The city offers so much more. And as we're having municipal university, we already offer, you know, I tell folks all the time, sure, college is great. And if you come work for us now, then we'll send you to college. I mean, we have a lot of different programs across the city to help send people to college. So I think that, to me, reframing this conversation, council president, we'll get back to you with the specifics on your question. I, I can confidently say the net-net for all of our Clean and Green Initiatives is going to be more people to do more work in a collaborative and coordinated fashion with an eye towards long-term city employment.
Thank you. Member Jones, you want to wrap it up?
No, I'm good. In the next round, what I'd like to do is focus on one of Member Phillips' priorities, which is we're working with DHS on parent university because at the beginning of the problem, precursor to the issue is parents' ability to raise our kids and parent accountability, something that we need to take a deeper dive on, giving them resources. But also, if your kid was out at one o'clock in the morning, why? So whoever from your team can respond to that, I'd be, be grateful to hear. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Council President.
Member Phillips, one second. Just want to acknowledge President Councilmember Cindy Bass, Councilmember Young, Councilmember Harity as well, present for the record.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. Many neighbors in the ninth district hesitate to utilize three-one-one because of its lack of transparency. They submit a complaint and there's no follow-up or clear action. Many times, the ticket is closed with no resolution. This actually happened to me. Chicago's three-one-one faces challenges with transparency regarding resolved claims, prompting the implementation of a system where photos are uploaded to verify completed work. What measures is the managing director's office taking to enhance the infrastructure of three-one-one?
Councilmember, Council President, I'm so glad you asked. We absolutely agree that three-one-one, you know, the folks who work in, in three-one-one are really dedicated and they work hard to be able to do what is within their scope. The obvious challenge, or I see it as an opportunity with three-one-one, is to make sure that those, that intake is connected to the work. That is the part that is missing. And we are building that. That is, in this budget, that is recognized. We're going to be building sort of an action component to three-one-one so we can make sure that when we get those tickets-
Yes.
-that we are immediately or very shortly, and, and again, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, not just seven and a half hours a day or not just if it happens on Friday, on Mon, wait till Monday to fix it. We are building that capability because we need round-the-clock coordination and collaboration, not just among city departments, but among all of our other partners. And I think this is one of the challenges with three-one-one. And again, I, I really, I want to be really clear. I appreciate their work, just as I appreciate our nine-one-one dispatchers. It's National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. All those folks kind of fall in that bucket. To me, and, and having, you know, sat with them, it's not a job I could do to be able to, essentially, you're getting all of this, this incoming information and you're not able to see closure. So you can imagine how tough that is. So these are tough jobs. The transparency, we are going to be building exactly that. We are going to be essentially making sure that we're putting these feeds out, making them public, not just showing the tickets, but showing the actions, exactly what you're suggesting, with photos, with information. It, you know, it's happened to me as well, that, you know, you call something in, and we just saw an example the other day, somebody, tickets closed and, you know, the, the discarded couch was still there. So we are, we need to build that. We need to give the folks in three-one-one, frankly, some love and some attention and better tools, not just technology tools, professional development, the training to get them to the point where we, when we close a ticket, we're not just closing the ticket. We know the work is done. We're putting that out there for everybody to see.
Thank you. Thank you, Managing Director. And also, one of the things, just to, to add into the transparency is, you know, how do we make sure that, maybe you can make more transparent where, by district, here are all the district complaints so that we, as councilmembers in our team, we can figure out, you know, what was open, what was closed as well, immediately. So that could be helpful.
Yeah, Councilmember, we're actually going to be kind of organizing as we're, you know, organizing by geography for this coordination. We're going to be doing that by councilman and district. So we make sure that as people are visualizing, they can see that, that you all will have direct access to this, to this information. And we really think that's actually, making it transparent is going to help the folks who are working there so they can actually see the fruits of their labors.
Thanks. There, this is around Otis's work. So as we know, there's a high demand for speed cushions in most district council offices. And I know Vision Zero is looking at the dozens or some roads that make up the highest number of vehicle deaths and accidents. But what relief are we going to be giving our residents in terms of helping them understand what can be done to slow down traffic? Because I want to hear from you all, have you thought about other measures that could be in place? Because right now, there's this deep belief among residents that their block, everyone's block deserves a speed calming measure, specifically a, a, a speed hump, right? Speed bumps. So that may not be practical, right? So what are we going to be doing to make sure residents feel like there's traffic additions that are being slowed down across the city?
Councilmember, Council President, as you know, Vision Zero is a high priority for Mayor Parker. Her fourth executive order was to essentially move Vision Zero forward. I can tell you and, you know, because we were at their conference together, it's a high priority for me as well. And it's really been an honor. We have an incredibly dedicated group of folks within our Office of Multimodal Planning who are working on Vision Zero and thinking about those issues literally around the clock and continuing to address the education component. You know, you're, you're exactly right. The, if you speed between the traffic calming installations, that, it just doesn't work. So we really need folks to embrace their role in this and slow down. I mean, we see that everywhere around the city. Rest assured, the Vision Zero folks have, are working constantly to find the most efficient and effective way to deploy the resources we have in communities for speed cushions, for other traffic calming measures, for bike lanes, which are also, bike lanes are, in addition to providing that bike network that is so important, bike lanes are also, you know, provide traffic calming. So this really is, it is an extremely complicated system in Vision Zero and with our, what our Streets Department is doing.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can, I mean, we can get you more specifics. There's a lot of detailed information on how these decisions are made and what they're doing.
And I don't want to cut you off, but one of the things that could be really helpful is how do we communicate with residents the, the process towards getting speed cushions and how slow it's going to be? It can't just necessarily become from us. And I think it's going to be important that we communicate this across the entire city through maybe a website, through email trans, you know, you know, communication is something. Because right now, residents, every resident in the city of Philadelphia believes they deserve a speed bump on their block. And so maybe there has to be a level of things that you're saying that you're going to be doing, how you're doing it because you're, we're going to frustrate the city right now. We just came from a community meeting last night where that was the biggest topic, so.
Councilmember, we, we agree on the importance of education and, and prevention. And I know that our, Mike Carroll, our Deputy Managing Director for Transportation Infrastructure Systems is here, and I know his team is watching. So we'll make sure that we double down on that and provide that information.
Thank you, Managing Director. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Roy.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Director Teal.
Good morning, Councilmember.
Director Gier. Thanks for being here today. Okay. As we all know, this administration hit the one-hundred-day milestone last week and dropped the one-hundred-day report focused on public safety, which I was just kind of perusing through as the Councilman Phillips was asking his questions. I want to spend some time today asking about that plan so that I can understand how the Office of Public Safety is thinking about the rollout, starting with the Kensington Community Renewal, Revival, excuse me. The first phase of this plan is warning and opportunity, where the police and others will visit the area to give occupants a final chance to take shelter or treatment before enforcement begins in Phase Two. Phase Two kicks off a multi-day effort to go block by block, sweeping the area, arresting folks who didn't comply during Phase One. So I want to get very clear on the details of this. How long does the administration plan to be in the warning and opportunity phase before the sweeps begin? And what does, if you will, warning actually look like? Will written notices be given? Are you relying on word of mouth only? Can you speak to that, please?
Absolutely. Thanks for the, thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Some of this I will reserve for the police department in terms of the actual police actions. I'm, I'm not, I don't want to speak on their behalf there, but I'm, I'm happy to answer this question as it relates to these phases because I want to make it very clear. That Phase One, in which there's going to be outreach to individuals to attempt to connect them with services, that goes through all phases. So as a priority, I don't, if we're in Phase Two, where there are going to be enforcement of criminal violations, well, as a first step, we're still going to be offering services to those individuals. So it is, I want to be clear that it is not as though at Phase Two, there will be no opportunities that were presented in Phase One. Those will always be available into the future. That is the primary goal of this administration, is to connect people to services.
To be clear, all phases of, of this plan-
Absolutely.
-will include the, the offering of resources in each step?
Absolutely. If there is an individual who is going to accept services, no matter where we're at, that is the point. And that is, that would be, that, that is the top priority, top goal, absolutely, yes.
So can you, but can you speak to me about the number of days or the weeks that people, that, that you'll give folks to find out other arrangements or begin seeking treatment? Like what is the actual detailed day and week plan at this point?
I don't believe that there's been a date provided yet by the police department as to, as to what that is.
Thank you.
Sure, but that period where this, where we will be reaching out to people will continue and there's, there's no timeframe on that. Right, there is no timeframe on that.
Thank you, Director. As sweeps occur, what is the plan for handling folks' belongings? Their clothes, personal items, house, things that they were using for housing? Will there be a mechanism for folks to restore their belongings to, to return to after receiving that treatment? What is, what is the thinking along that line?
Yes. And again, I really appreciate these questions because this is getting to the point of how this needs to be done compassionately, right? When I first started doing this work and as a prosecutor, we, you know, over a decade ago, we weren't thinking about these kinds of things, right? But the reality of it is, as I get closer to this work, there are barriers to these, to these folks entering treatment. Another one that I think about that I'll pull out is people who are in relationships, right? A lot of the places where they'd go for inpatient housing, they won't accept, they won't, they won't accept the relationship, the couple, to come. They, they separate them and, you know, I have a wife, that would be difficult, right, to be separated if we both need a treatment. We are thinking about these issues. Yes, there will be a plan to take in, to answer your specific question, the personal belongings-
But as it stands right now, that's not clear.
I'm sorry?
As it stands at the moment, it's not clear.
No, no, that is, that is part of the plan. Absolutely, we are planning for that.
Okay.
Yes.
For the police and other public safety partners that are involved in the actual sweeping, can you describe the training that they will receive to ensure that medical, behavioral health needs of these folks being arrested are, in this place, are actually being taken into account in the process? That's something I think we raised and mentioned in the past couple of days, early yesterday.
Well, if we're talking about the folks who would just be arrested, that would be because they refused treatment and because they were doing something criminal.
No, no.
Right, right. So, so, but to answer your, to answer your question, and this might be better suited for the police department, but the officers who are going to be out there in these particular areas for this particular Kensington plan are the ones who are highly trained in interacting in, in sort of this, this kind of work, this kind of really difficult work where there needs to be nuances and there need to be officers who, who have training. So I can't speak specifically to the training, but I do know that that is absolutely contemplated.
So there's an assumption that they, the ones that are going out there are prepared to handle the uniqueness of the situation?
I think that that's fair to say.
Continuing with the Kensington Community Revival, I want to talk about how the administration is expanding Philadelphia's treatment capacity to serve people with addiction. In the first pla, pha, phase, excuse me, in the first phase, warning and opportunity. The plan states that PPD will partner with various programs and city partners wishing to provide services and treatment. And this will be the final opportunity to take advantage of treatment and shelter services. So that kind of is cross with what you were saying earlier, which is that in every phase, services will be offered. Is that still the case?
Uh, no, no, I don't think that that's, I don't think that's in, in contradiction with what I said. So i, if you want to read it again, I can respond, but I don't think that's in contradiction. We're, we're very clear that if, if there is a person and they are in Phase Two, Phase Three, whatever, and they are extended services and they accept services, whether that's through PAD, if they're PAD-eligible, or that's through some other mechanism, that that, that that will be the, the services that they will get.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what you read, but that's, yeah.
That's fine. This administration has already acknowledged that Philadelphia's treatment capacity is far below what's needed to get the hundreds of people in addiction into long-term care. Do you have a plan to expand the city's treatment capacity so the Kensington Community Revival is functional in that regard?
So there's the mid, long term, and then there's the short term. In the short term, and we, in our meetings, and we have members of our opioid response unit here and, and members of, of the other agencies, who are really going to be doing the heavy lifting here, we have reiterated over and over that we will not do anything, we will not proceed in a way that jeopardizes the folks who are out there. We will make sure that when we are offering services, that there are beds available for those services that we will be offering. So OHS, DBHIDS, they, they will have numbers of what services are available when they go out in any different, any given day during Phase One, and we'll be able to connect people to those, to those services that we know exist. And then there's the medium and long-term work that we're, that we're doing, frankly, for the first time as a city.
Thank you, Director. I heard the bill. Okay. What community stakeholders have been a part of developing this plan? Can you name them, the community stakeholders that have been part of the knowledge plan?
Sure. The NK CDC, we've, we've had several conversations with them. There are organizations that frankly, Officer Rosario, from day one when he was appointed, has been specifically over and over and over and over reaching out to, I believe, a great deal of his work starting out. And the reason why he's there and the reason why I think he's so supported by the people who live there is because of his, his community outreach and, and hearing, and hearing what they want. But I believe that that community input that he built up, right? Not just actually over when he was appointed commissioner, but prior to that, for the years he's been working there, influenced the plan and-
So the Deputy Commissioner kind of holds the partnerships there in, in this, in this work?
Well, he's the person who's been doing the, the work on the ground, right? I'm, I live in, I live in South Philly, so I'm not going to pretend to speak for the people there. But the representatives of our, of not only our administration, but also I think the department are tied into the community.
These two repapfire because I'm, I'm kind of taxing my time already. When, when will you do an analysis of the, the expansions that will get done to determine whether they're sufficient to meet the need?
Which expansions?
The expansions to the, to, to make sure that everyone has access to the, the long-term care. We were, I was already asking about the treatment capacity, right? We want to make sure that those are working and actually meeting folks' needs. Will there be a process where you're kind of analyzing them, checking them, seeing if they're actually meeting the needs? Do you have that already in plan? When, when do you plan to do such an analysis?
Yes.
To make sure that they're actually hitting whatever goals that you all are setting?
Yes. I, I think that's a question that folks from DBHIDS can answer. I've been in those meetings, though, where they have pretty excellent sophistication in terms of trying to understand the population that we're dealing with and, and-
I have more questions, but I'll get them in the second round. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, everyone. First point, please put page numbers on your testimony. I am putting little tabs. It's very hard to follow. And I have to take speed reading classes because we just got this all at two PM yesterday. So I understand everybody's stress, but it makes for us being less informed because we don't have time to get through that. Question about the Capitol Projects Office. Under this, that section in the testimony, I don't see anything about rebuild. Can you talk a bit more about the plans for rebuild moving forward? And a, an associated question, it says consolidating architectural and engineering staff for this department. Where will these employees be coming from? Where will these employees be coming from and what will be the impact on other departments?
Councilmember, Council President, appreciate the question. I'm going to try to answer this at a level that is sufficient, and if not, we have Aparna Palantino here. The rebuild projects that are in the pipeline will all be taken to completion. So anything that started out as a rebuild project is going to be finished within our new capital program office. So Aparna and her team and the rebuild team are working together to do that. And of course, in some cases, additional funding is needed. You know, we've had those conversations with, with many of you, Council President. So those projects are going to be carried to completion.
And we have a schedule of which rec centers those are?
Yes, we can certainly get you the latest updates on, get, you know, all of Council, the latest updates on the rebuild projects. The capital program office is being assembled from existing components, so this is at the staff level, from the Department of Public Property and from Parks and Rec and from the rebuild staff, as well as some additional folks to bring that capability. One of the things that really worked, and I wasn't here, but one of the things that, that we heard really worked and it's already, we're already seeing this with what Aparna's done, is having all of the folks that we need in one place to be able to bring these projects, often complicated projects, to completion on time and on budget, or as close as we can get to that. So bringing all these folks together, adding some additional staff in key roles, you know, having folks who can expedite contract reviews and contract conformance, very close partnership with procurement to make sure that we're doing all those things, you know, by the letter, according to all the regulations. And, you know, frankly, having a, you know, a rock star director like Director Palantino for this effort, who has experience in these different areas, that's really been key. And, you know, we frankly are already seeing the, the results of that and the benefits of that.
And so the opportunity cost when things are delayed is really a problem, and that results in cost overruns in projects. So I'm hoping that your office is coordinating with LNI as well as, you know, procuring things, because that's where we see this added amount of money coming in.
Councilmember, absolutely. Again, that's one of the benefits of having the, the CPO, as we call it, within the Managing Director's Office, because we have so many of those relevant departments, including the operating departments that often inhabit and use these buildings, whose staff use these buildings, all integrated from the beginning. And then anybody that's not part of that, because we do have a lot of other partners, intergovernmental partners, coordinating all of that in, in one place.
So just going back to that list of rebuild that are already targeted, that, does that mean after that list is exhausted, there's no more rebuild projects? Or do we not, is there a sunset on this beverage tax?
As, Councilmember, as far as I know, and again, that might be a question for our Chief Finance Officer, the sunset on the beverage tax, as far as I understand, there, there is not. Those dollars will still be available for projects that are relevant to that original intent, and those projects will be executed across, you know, city departments like Parks and Rec and other folks that were doing that work, just not necessarily with the rebuild brand. You know, I also want to acknowledge the philanthropic partners that helped initiate rebuild. Those, those folks have been part of these conversations. They understand that we are moving forward. For us, I mean, candidly, the focus is really on executing those existing, that existing portfolio to completion, plus continuing to work on all the other capital projects and programs that are across city government. And when we get to that point, I think we all are excited to get to the point where we are completing those rebuild projects as close to on time and on budget as possible at this point. Then I think there's probably a discussion about what, you know, what is next. We know there are already, there are huge capital needs across the PPR portfolio and other portfolios. So I think, to me, that the need for these types of investments does not ever sunset, at least not from what I can see, and we intend to continue those projects out of CPO with all of the relevant city departments.
Thank you. Switching to Office of Immigrant Affairs, I was wondering how are they working to address the issue of human trafficking? And what systems does the city have in place to make sure the victims are supported? And are we tracking these outcomes?
Our Office of Immigrant Affairs, Councilmember, extremely dedicated group of folks, not a large team, and I know they are certainly, you know, part of our broader city efforts around human trafficking, and frankly, larger efforts from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. I know that our Police Department, our criminal justice partners also have equities in that. I'm not sure that our Office of Immigrant Affairs has a specific program around that. They are, you know, certainly savvy to that and very close coordination always with other city agencies.
So is there anywhere in the city where we address this outside of BPD?
Well, no, I, I think, I think everywhere, Councilmember. I know that we did continuing education in the Fire Department for all of our EMS providers and firefighters about human trafficking. The Department of Homeland Security has a number of programs. So I think we are consistently making sure that people are aware of that. And, you know, OIA, to the point, the folks that they are serving, I know that they are aware of it. And also, we have another program within our Health and Human Services portfolio that, that our Office of Domestic Violence Prevention that also works on that.
All right, thank you. I'll hold my questions for the second round. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketsy Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, and thank you for being here this morning. We oftentimes have said that the MDO's office is the conductor of city services. And we've seen challenges in the past as we have tried to conduct the orchestra. Can you share with us, in your time as the MDO, have you or has anyone in your office been able to count the number of the unhoused population in the Kensington community? And if so, what is that number?
Councilmember, I think the, well, first off, I haven't had much time in the Managing Director's Office, a hundred some odd days. I think we certainly agree that there's a need for additional coordination and collaboration resources, sort of what I was talking about before. So we're making sure that we're building that capacity. I think the, the best numbers we have for your specific question about the unhoused population in, in the Kensington area that needs services, those are the numbers that were provided yesterday from DBHIDS. So that number is specific to Kensington. As I recall, that number is around 675, according to their data. And citywide, there's also information on their website with a citywide number. Candidly, I think those folks do a great job. We have folks in the Office of, in OHS, Homeland Services, who do a great job counting what they can. I think we certainly want to spend additional time and attention and look for additional resources in other ways that we can make sure that we can continually validate that number. And I think as we start to build and work through this longer-term, you know, short, medium, and long-term continuum of care, that is also going to help us get better data. You know, we're building in data collection, we're building in program evaluation from the beginning of that. We're having those conversations, making sure that's part of a system. You know, with any number like that, I mean, it changes every day. It's a difficult number to pin down. I think that DBHIDS Commissioner yesterday talked a lot about those challenges, and, you know, we are going to continue to invest time and resources to try to continue to refine that number.
If you heard DBHIDS yesterday, then you also heard that they don't have a strategy in doing the work and then following up on the work that they're doing on the ground, right? So while they're responding to the need, they are doing a very poor job at ensuring that people don't continue to come, not just into the city and, and find themselves unsheltered, but they can't figure out a way to stop them from coming into the Kensington footprint. Have you and your team looked at, as you stabilize the community, how do you maintain the work that you all are doing? And if you have, can you share with us what that strategy is?
Councilmember, the, the short answer is yes. I mean, that is, it is really important, and I'm, I'm glad you said that. This needs to be, what we're doing needs to be sustainable. And I don't mean in the sense of sustainability, we're talking about the environmental sustainability, although that's a component of it. We need to be able to make sure that the very complicated system that we are building works for the long run. And so absolutely, we are thinking about all of those things, thinking about the coordination, trying to find ways to understand better the different populations that we're serving, including, and of course, putting the community at the center of this work, even as we take care of patients' needs and their clinical needs, get them into long-term treatment, housing, jobs. So we are looking at this entire continuum. It's, I mean, again, it's, it's extremely complicated, probably complex. There are a lot of different partners, there are a lot of challenges, but we are literally working around the clock with an inter-agency, an intergovernmental team to get into the details, you know, sort of as, you know, Councilmember Work was talking about, what happens with the clothes? What happens with the possessions? Where do we go from here? How do we move people the most efficient and effective way? So we're looking at all those things.
The priority in this community is that the laws that are in the books are upheld. And so I think that what people want to hear from you as the conductor is that the laws in the city of Philadelphia are going to apply in neighborhoods like Kensington because they apply in other places. And so can we get that from you? I, I have heard the mayor say many times that Kensington is her priority. I believe her. She has shown me nothing different up until today. She can't have her hands in everything, right? And so we're going to depend on people like you. I want to hear your commitment to my community that we are a priority, because I believe that if we stabilize Kensington, we stabilize the city, and we stabilize what is happening with the unsheltered population across the board. But I want to hear from you that there is a commitment to uphold the law. There are people in this body and in this city who don't see what that community sees every day. They are my priority because I was sent here to represent them. And so quite frankly, I don't care how long we hold their belongings, I want to see people go into treatment. But what I want to see right now is the law being upheld in my community, and I need to hear that from you.
Councilmember, Council President, I think if you've heard that from the mayor, that, that is the person from whom you need to hear it. If you've heard it from our Police Commissioner, you know, the way we are organized, that is our Chief Law Enforcement Officer, reporting directly to the mayor. I think you've heard it in a full-throated way from the Police Commissioner. I think you've heard it very stridently from Mayor Parker. I think you've heard it from our Chief Public Safety Director, Adam Gier. And I can tell you that the folks in the Managing Director's Office, our opioid response unit, all, all of our departments already are, have heard it from Clean and Green, which actually is also, you know, reports directly to the mayor. We are certainly, while the challenges, many of the challenges we're trying to address exist all across the city, we all know that Kensington is the place that we are tackling first. You've heard that from the mayor. My job is to execute and implement the mayor's visions and plans. So I certainly, if you heard it from the mayor, you've heard it from me, because we do-
I appreciate that.
...what Mayor Parker asked us to do.
I appreciate your response. We heard it from the mayor before, too. And we heard it from his MDO, and we heard it from his response teams. That's why I want to hear it from you, because that's, my community doesn't have faith, right? We are, we're in a different place right now. I'm sure you, you know that. We're in a different place right now as it relates to how they're responding to what you all are saying. But when we're hearing it from other folks and not hearing it from you, who is the, the conductor of the orchestra, it's difficult to, to believe, right? Because ultimately, you're the person that's going to send down the, the, the orders. And so I was just asked to ask you to put it on the record, and so I'm, I'm doing what my, my folks are asking you to do, and I heard the bell, want to be respectful of that. But that's all I'm trying to get out of you.
Councilmember, I appreciate that. I did, I, I want to be really clear, though, with the way that our city government is organized, some of the orders that you are talking about are not coming from or through the Managing Director. So I just want to be really clear about that. My orders come from Mayor Parker, and I can tell you that in my own time here in the city, I've spent a lot of time in Kensington, invested a lot in other programs and other agencies where I've worked. We're continuing to do that with restoring capacity in other places that affect Kensington. And I think the, my last personal, the last personal time, and hopefully the last time that I almost lost my life in the line of duty was in Kensington. So I certainly understand from a ground level what the challenges are, and I'm thankful that we have such a great team here that is working together to make Kensington a priority at the mayor's direction and under her leadership to get it done.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Rulando.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you. So I have a couple of buckets of questions, but I'll just stay on the same line, especially while you're both up here. I just wanted to go back to the stats that we heard yesterday, because I am, I think we're all trying to figure out how this all works together, that DBHIDS said they have 1,874 beds, there are currently 109 vacancies, there are 675 people who are unhoused and in need of treatment services and potentially housing on, in Kensington. They believed, I think they said they believe 21% of them are chronically homeless. Can we talk about, and, and, and for anybody who, who couldn't, for the numbers that are beyond the 109 beds, there was an overflow plan, but we didn't have any details about the overflow plan. So I wanted to know more about who's really overseeing the overflow plan? And then the second thing is, how does this interact with your triage plans and how we're going to hopefully have one point of entry to all these places? I'm loving one point of entry. I've worked for the city for a long time, too. We do a lot of things in a lot of places. The more we can consolidate things, the better. How these will work with the triage centers, especially as they're throughout the city. I'm just going to add one more question to that. OSH, OHS, Shelter Services has changed its name over the years. Shelters has its own intake, and will that intake be subsumed by the triage centers in any way, or are triage centers really going to be only about people with addictions? Thank you.
Councilmember, I think the answer to all those questions is, is yes, the, the short answer. We, we don't have this all figured out, candidly. I mean, we, we simply don't. A lot of folks have been working on this for a long time, and, you know, we are working on it around the clock right now with a lot of different partners. We are, as we just talked about, putting the community at the center of this work-
Yes.
...now. And as we are looking to, you know, we don't, I don't necessarily have, to Councilmember Lazada's point, I don't necessarily have confidence, high confidence, in any of the numbers that we are, are told about that represent different cohorts of these populations. You know, I certainly think there are data gaps, so we're trying to identify those and enclose those. At the same time, we are meeting with, I think it's safe to say, we're trying to meet with everybody who might be able to provide the beds we need, the services we need, in a compassionate, dignified way. So we're meeting with all kinds of people and asking them to, how can you expand your capacity? What do you need? How do we, as a system, how does our healthcare system pay for that so it's self-sustaining? I think one of the things, while a lot of folks have been involved in this for a long time, I think there are some assumptions, certainly assumptions that, that even I had, the mayor's convening of the academic healthcare systems, providers, payers, her convening towards the beginning of our first hundred days, believe it or not, was the first time that all of those folks were in the same room. And somebody raised their hand and said, you know, we should do some asset mapping. Yes, emphatically, yes. So I think we even thought, some of us thought, who've been close to this work, that a lot of folks were doing things that maybe, you know, everybody's busy, a lot of different aspects of this system are under resourced, we know that the broader healthcare system is, you know, arguably in crisis. And where that all plays out is on the ground in neighborhoods in Philadelphia, including in Kensington. in Kensington. So that is, we're trying to convene these folks, catalyze these actions, answer the questions better with a sense of urgency. And we are truly, you know, in an ideal world, we would have all the answers to your questions because we'd be at, you know, month 12 to 18 of an 18, a year and a half planning process to answer every question and do all the analysis before we started taking action. We don't have time for that. Our neighbors don't have time for that. Frankly, these patients don't have time for that. You've all met Mayor Parker, so you know she doesn't have time for that. Some of you have known me long enough to know that I don't have time for that. So we are moving aggressively to try to understand all the facets of this system, to build the pieces that are missing. This is a classic market failure. Nobody has done this, and it's because right now, the way the system is calibrated, it's because there's no money to be made for the middle and the long term. Otherwise, the market would have moved in and done this. So we, as a city, and as far as I know, as far as I can tell from talking with other folks around the nation, we're the first city and county that is trying to address this in a holistic, systematic way. We're building new structures and systems. So we're meeting with everybody to try to understand what the need is better, to try to understand where we get initial capacity, where do we get more right now? More beds right now for folks who need help right now? And how do we build the medium-to-long-term system and structures for care, treatment, housing, jobs?
Thank you for that answer. And I love holistic work as well, and appreciate your breaking new ground and breaking down silos, which I hear all of you saying. Just shift quickly into another question about data because that was a focus of mine. What's the status of the data management office? Do you still have that? It's under the MDO's office.
I am, Councilmember, Council President, I'm not aware of a data management office per se. That might be, now we have a unit called IDEA. My sense is that is probably IDEA. IDEA actually gives us, it is alive and well, and gives us a pretty robust capacity to do some deep dive projects that they're doing, and we're hoping to not just build them out some more, but also add, you know, they have a certain, and you do know this, you know, data analytics, it's not one size fits all. So in addition to IDEA, we're building PhillyStat 360, as you've heard the mayor talk about. There are positions for that and capacity for that. That's going to be a key aspect of this. All of our operating agencies have data analytics capabilities in them. We know that my colleague here, building a data analytics capacity. Our goal is really to make sure, again, to Councilmember Lozada's point, to connect and collaborate and cooperate across all of these different data analytics units. And so we are also going to be building that in as part of our operational coordination component.
Can you tell me more about IDEA? Is that going to be one place where all of the data comes? I'm looking for the next phase. When we finally are collecting the right data we want, will it be housed in one place so we can start connecting more dots and solving more problems?
Councilmember, great question, Council President. The one place is going to be PhillyStat 360. So in the mayor's office, led by Kristen Bray, and all of these other, because again, that is a certain set of, you know, again, the goal here is to turn these data into information. We collect a lot of data. Some of it is, you know, we are concerned about the validity and the reliability of some of those data. We know there are gaps. So we are going to continue to have a lot of different units that are doing data analytics around their particular specialties, and we're going to make sure that all of those top lines are connected into PhillyStat 360. And more than just looking at those data and admiring those data, we are going to be using those data. The mayor is absolutely going to be using PhillyStat 360 data and information to hold all of us accountable for performance. That's the point. At the same time, we're going to have these other capabilities that let us do deeper dives, things like, let's understand better what's going on in Kensington, what's going on in other neighborhoods? Where are these folks coming from? Where are they going? And of course, the police department, you can already see in Commissioner Bethel's plan, really putting data technology at the center of that.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I want to go back just a little bit. The expansion of our beds, right? Because I know at some point in time, Commissioner Bethel's going to ramp up, right? And it's characteristic, if you take the treatment, you don't take the treatment, you go on the state road, right? And so just reiterate to me again, where are the beds coming from? Who are we partnering with in terms of the beds to scale up? I know you just convened all the healthcare service providers. Are they playing a role in terms of providing the medical services that are provided, that are going to be needed when it's time to ramp up? And then, I wish you would have been here when the prisons were here because the prisons couldn't answer this question, but all right. So you guys, some people are going to say, you know what? Lock me up. I ain't going with y'all, right? So now we double, triple, quadruple the number of people on state road, but they still addicts on state road, right? So give me an idea of, one, the expansion of the beds, two, the medical services that are going to be provided for those individuals, and then, three, when we quadruple the amount of people that's on state road, just the plan and strategy on how we're dealing with that. That's just something that just kind of came to mind. Questions have been coming up, and people have been calling me, just trying to get an idea, and I said, well, I'll ask so I can be able to respond back.
Council President, I appreciate the way that you've broken that down and the way you framed it, kind of working backwards through the questions. Our goal is to not triple or quadruple the population on state road. So our goal is to address the other facets of what you're talking about and create a system where getting the short, medium, and long-term care, treatment, and housing that folks need is preferable to spending time on state road. That said, if we have folks who end up in the custody of the Philadelphia Department of Prisons, as you heard during their testimony, they do provide a lot of healthcare, including providing the types of services that one might need, who ends up there with substance use disorder. And this administration, again, with Mayor Parker's leadership, we've actually made sustainable at the prisons, providing the proper level of care. So folks are not just kind of kept in this, this middle state to get folks into the clinically, the next phase of recovery and hopefully get out again. So we also see that population, while they may come out of this system, when they come back in, when they re-enter, talking with our partners about re-entry, talking about where do we get jobs? How do we make sure that we give them immediate access to wherever they come out of our prisons, wherever they are in their journey? How do we make sure that they have access to what they need next? Because this is part of the do loop that we've been caught in. Everything has been short-term, 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 and then whether they're being treated clinically or they're in the law enforcement system, nobody can plug back in to the medium and longer term because even where those exist, they're not necessarily connected, they haven't been viewed holistically. So we really want to not end up having this go the law enforcement route. Services, services, again, this is, we are talking with everybody who might possibly be...
This is medical services, right?
Medical services, yes, sir. So everybody who can provide different levels of medical services. And this is a, this is a key point too. You know, a bed is not a bed is not a bed. There are a lot of different categories of beds, a lot of different types of clinical treatment provided, sort of classified by bed, and as a result, a lot of different folks who can work in this space, many of whom have not yet been engaged. So we certainly think that there are opportunities here to build new jobs, to build our workforce, to talk with the health systems, all of whom are having challenges with recruitment and retention. The reality is, for some of the beds that we're talking about, you don't necessarily have to have gone to nursing school or to medical school. So we're trying to ensure that we are matching up the workforce as it exists today, even as we continue to build, as Councilmember Jones was saying. We provide more opportunities with all these different partners to get folks to do these jobs. It is a tactical challenge to have the, even when we have the physical capacity, the beds, it is a tactical challenge for us to make sure that they are properly staffed with the right level of clinical or other provider to ensure we're providing the right, the most clinically appropriate and compassionate care that we can. So we're talking with a lot of folks to make sure that as we start to move things forward, that we have the right providers there, the right medical services there, and the right number of beds. The answer is the same for beds. We're talking to everybody who might have a bed of X, Y, or Z category. Where are they? What does it cost for us to get them? What do you need? How much time do you need? Even as we look across our own portfolio and try to figure out how many beds we can get now and months in the future, well, I would say now, weeks, months, years, because we don't know how big the need is. And we're doing all these things at the same time with a very dedicated team to try to build something that nobody's built before.
What's the role of District Attorney's Office and all sorts of courts? Have we considered working with treatment courts so those who are being arrested, right? Based upon their addiction, right? Treatment court, you go into a program, you're monitored, you're getting the addiction, the behavioral health support that you need, and then when you're finished, you don't even have a record, right? Because you completed your treatment. Is that a part of this strategy? And also, what's the role of the District Attorney's Office? He used to have a diversionary program, from my understanding, where if an individual gets arrested for a certain amount of drugs, they could be diverted into a treatment facility? But I'm not sure how it's being utilized, which we'll ask when we actually have him come and testify.
Council President, I'm so glad you said that because I think it is, it's an aspect of this that is not always understood. A lot of this pipeline and this system is not necessarily in the executive branch of city government, and we don't have control over that. We have some influence, and frankly, thanks to Mayor Parker's leadership, and expanding amount of influence, and I'm going to turn it over to our chief...
When you say we don't have control, you mean the other agencies or elected officials that are operating?
Other branches of government, the courts, the DA. Those are independent branches of government, so...
I just want to be clear though, so you know how we approach things. We approve all their budgets. And so at the end of the day, there's a level of accountability where we all can be at the table, and the mayor actually signs off at the end. And so there's a great level of influence in making sure everybody's participating in this mission to make our city the cleanest, greenest, safest city in America with economic opportunity for everybody. Mr. Adam Gier.
Amen. And I think that that's right, what my colleague, Adam, stated about sort of the force of the mayor here, right? And it's really the force of the city and this notion of one Philly, which our mayor loves to say, and I'm a believer. And I'm a believer when we've been in some really difficult situations, some really difficult challenges, right? And looking around and seeing the partners that we have there. And I think that that's a credit to the leadership of this city and thus understanding what we need to do for our citizens, right?
Is the District Attorney at the table with you in your strategy?
Absolutely. Absolutely. He's a partner, and an important partner.
Is the courts at the table with you in terms of your strategy?
We, yes, yes. We've met with court leadership. We are all very, very, very interested in aligning and, you know, aligning where we can.
Interested in aligning versus are they at the table actively participating and working with you on your strategy?
We, that strategy, and there are certain things that are in development. And the answer is yes. So the short answer is yes.
Because I'm just supporting you. I just need a yes, no. They're at the table, we need, they're integral part of making sure that we're just not criminalizing a whole population of people. We want them to get treatment, they can go to treatment court, get the addiction support that they need, record, get a sponge. They have a like, because here's the other part. We want them to get jobs, right? Because we just talked about this. But if I'm getting locked up and I'm getting a felony because I get high, I ain't getting no job. I'm not going to get a real sustainable job. Now I got a felony, nobody wants to hire me. So another way to approach it, to take in consideration, the drug dealers need to get roofed, get them 100 years, right? But the ones who are really suffering, that we're going to help, right? Because I'm on plan, I support the Kensington Caucus, but also recognize addiction is a disease, right? Don't give them a felony for a disease. Treat the disease, right? And do all the holistic things that we're doing. And I'm just saying, the courts could play a major role in helping people get their lives together without getting a felony, if you can take in consideration and be a part of your strategy.
100%. And I'll be, I'll be short of this time. Yes. We have tremendous partners in the judiciary. We've met with judiciary leadership. We are continuing to have conversations there at the table.
My man. The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. I actually had no questions about Kensington coming into today, but listening to my colleague's line of questions have created some questions about Kensington. Before I start, I want to be very clear. I'm not a part of the Kensington Caucus, but I'm in Kensington a lot. My son goes to school in Kensington, I will be there today. I run a free basketball camp in Kensington, has done for the last couple of years. Heck, I even went to Conwell Middle School. So I've seen the change in Kensington over the last years, because I don't want to give up my age. You said earlier that you've been meeting with community organizations. I think it was Councilmember O'Rourke's question. And the organization you named was New Kensington CDC. I'm hoping that you can give us a list of other organizations that you've been meeting with in Kensington that craft this plan, because that was the only organization you named. Now, look, I want to be clear. As I was sitting here listening, I sent out some texts to say, hey, have you heard of the mayor's plan to clean up Kensington? Have anybody reached out to you? Nobody has said, oh, yeah, we've talked to the admin, we're well aware of what's going on. So outside of Kensington CDC, who else have you been talking to about this plan and what you're looking to do? And then also, I think it was Councilmember Rulando. I think the number she said was 600, around 600 homeless folks and 675 in Kensington? No way I believe that number, right? It's no way I believe that that is the actual number. That might be what you see on Kensington Avenue, but if you go to the railroad tracks, if you go under 95, you know, I can show you some of interesting places where you'll see people have set up encampments. So number one, what are the organizations that you're talking to down there? And number two, where did the 675 number come from?
Well, I'll start with number two and let my colleague handle number one. That number is from DBHIDS's outreach teams, a lot of work that they've done. I also have, you know, frankly, concerns about that number and whether it's understated. So I don't take that number as gospel. Also, we know, and we are going to be doing a lot of work with the Office of Homeless Services. Those folks that they have working there are extremely dedicated, and they have some real limitations to what they can do and where they can go. I know from my experience in my last role, I think there are a lot of folks who are inside buildings and other structures who may or may not get counted when we do the annual point-in-time count. So we, we are also concerned about the numbers, which is why we are building. We tend to think there's a lot of need, and that is why we are looking for capacity, bed and treatment capacity, housing for the long-term jobs anywhere and everywhere. So that's our piece of it.
Thank you, Assistant. I'm seeing if we can get a more definitive list of community organizations, but we in my office have two positions, rather, that are dedicated to community partnerships, specifically with Kensington. We have had considerable contact with the community over the last several of months in informing them when we get information, when we're working with the police plan, which frankly, that police plan, yes, with our, with the city, was being developed internally with our city agencies as we were, as we were moving forward. I think it's important to make the distinction here between this initial phase, if you will, or this initial planning that the PPD through... or this initial planning that the PPD through Commissioner Rosario is sort of spearheading and being supported by our agencies, and what will be a broader, longer, more sustained, engaged conversation with the Kensington community in the plan that gets towards phases three, four, five, turning over to the community. That is frankly work that we, and we've had conversations internally about this, need to be more intentional about. In fact, the first time I met with NK CDC, they expressed some of the similar sentiments that you expressed, right? Why aren't we at the table here? Who's at the table in the beginning of this plan? And we have made assurances to them that as we move forward, we are going to continue to be intentional. But where I think the real heavy lifting is going to come is in these additional phases, two, three, four, five, where we're really letting our, not only our legislators, but our community leaders and our community organizations be at the table for how they want to see their community.
So I'm not as informed as other council members are as it relates to this particular issue, so I'm not going to speak to what you're doing or not doing. What I will say is that the people who are in my universe that I deal with in Kensington on a consistent basis have heard nothing. I would also say, as the Chair of the Education Committee, that it would be very disappointing to execute any type of plan at Kensington without talking to the schools in Kensington. I'm sure that hasn't happened yet as well either, and I would recommend that there be a dialogue with the leaders in the schools, because those young people are the ones who I listen to everybody talk about all the time. We don't want them to see this, we don't want them to experience this. And if they are the people that we are trying to protect in this effort to clean up Kensington, there's no way that we do this without having a conversation with them and the impact it's going to have on dismissal, arrival, out of school time-based initiatives and anything else that's going on. That's a shame that I lost all my time to Kensington. It's not a shame.
Can I respond to that, Councilmember? Because that is an incredibly important point. And I know that Commissioner Rosario, and I want to reemphasize this, because the fact of the matter is Commissioner Rosario has been meeting with anyone and everyone who has an interest across the board, no matter what the spectrum, in getting their feedback, including the principals, which is a very good point, Councilmember. And my understanding is that he has a very good relationship.
I'm just going to respectfully push back on that, right? Like, I have a text message in my phone right now that says, hey, Isaiah, I was just about to reach out to you, because we haven't heard from anyone about that. I literally started the conversation by saying, my son goes to school in Kensington.
Was that a principal, Councilmember?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Was that a prin-
CEO. CEO. The CEO of the school is saying, I've never heard from anything. So I'm not trying to, like, have this quarrel back and forth, but I'm 100% sure that you're not talking to all the schools in Kensington, because I'm literally in the middle of a conversation with the school right now, who says they haven't never heard from the mayor's office, the mayor's team about anything. So as the Chair of the Education Committee, I'm saying that it's important that we have a conversation with all of the schools, because they're directly impacted by this work. Now, if you want, I can reach out to Conwell, she's a great woman, find out what happened with that principal. Councilmember Lazada had the principals of Kensington here in City Council to honor and recognize them for the work that they're doing. So these are people we have a text relationship with. So I'm not going to give you information that's not necessarily accurate, especially if it's on a record. Council President, I definitely want to be queued up for a second round, because I have a lot of questions about a lot of other things under the Managing Director's office, including ACCT, which will have a direct impact on the work that you're looking to do in Kensington. Thank you, Council President, in second round. Please, sir. I can go one more question out. Okay, so I won't go second round. So when we did the appropriations transfer last fall, one of the issues that we had was the animal control, the animal care and control team. That organization was concerned, because they are in the midst of contract negotiations, and like the rest of us, we're struggling to hire as a city, they also are struggling to hire. They came before City Council, because they wanted to see a transfer ordinance approved to be able to get a pay raise for the workers, because they can't hire people to take these jobs. They felt like if they didn't get an appropriate amount of funding from the city, they would have to dismantle the organization, and then those services the city would essentially have to provide, which will cost us a lot more than the $6.8 million, $6.9 million that you all have allocated to ACCT. My question is, based on what you've allocated, and we are going to follow up with them to get their opinion as well, too, do we have enough money to meet the contractual obligations that was negotiated last year? And will we be able to assure ACCT is fully funded to the point where as though city government does not have to take over the services of dealing with, you know, a lot of things that I know I would never want to deal with myself?
Councilmember, Council President, appreciate the question. I've been here long enough and in enough roles that I've been in the position where we did have to take over those services or substantially augment those services directly. So we agree, ACCT provides a very important service. The answer to your first question is yes, the pay raise has been negotiated and we are covering it. There are not additional resources proposed for FY '25. We will continue to work closely with ACCT to make sure that they are able to provide the services necessary.
Okay, that's good to hear, because I would hate for them to come before City Council to ask us to advocate for more money or some type of transfer proposal, because they had to do that with the Alas administration, because the support wasn't there. So, Council President, I'm sorry, I do have to come back for a second round, because I have to ask issues around unsolved murders, as well as issues related to our prison. I do apologize. Thank you for the time.
No problem. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jay Young, and then we will go into, Harriet, did you press your button, because it's not lit up? Just wanted to double check. Okay. Then we will go into our second round. Councilmember Jeffrey Young.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. First question I have, looking at your budget, the zero fare program, so this is a program essentially that is working toward, I guess, eliminating fares for certain populations. The budget asked for four workers, four positions, is $730,000, which is average of $182,500 per position, right? So can you tell us who these people are, what their jobs are, if the average would be $182,000?
Councilmember, the, that's actually, some of those dollars are shared over to 311 to do some of that work. So it's not, it's not like there are four people who are making that number that you just put out there.
Which portion is dedicated to 311, and which portion is dedicated to the zero fare program?
Councilmember, we'll have to get back to you on that exact split.
Thank you. Question regarding rebuild, looking at the five-year plan, like, for the capital programs, you have no performance measures for capital programs. And given that there are some, I guess, there are costs, higher costs associated with rebuild with everything, like, how can we, as a council, determine what the viability of the capital programs are if you don't have any performance measures associated with that?
Councilmember, Council President, appreciate the question. CPO is literally a brand-new office. Their executive order was just signed. Rest assured that we will absolutely, as with every other city agency, be building out performance measures as they continue to consolidate workforces and do that initial work.
Yes, it's a new office, but it's not new work, right? And so you're, again, you're consolidating other offices, you're consolidating rebuild, you're consolidating some folks on public property, all these entities, all the different agencies. So there are programs that are continually to operate under the capital program. So did they have performance measures? Did they have things that we can look at to see if they're working or not? Because we're continuing, again, like rebuild, for example, we are continuing to do rebuild under this program. So there had to be some kind of performance measure for rebuild and those programs. Can you continue to, you know, just let us know what they are? Because then we're funding an office where, that we can't necessarily track how they're doing now.
Councilmember, the prior performance measures for the different units that are now, have now been sort of taken into CPO are still there in prior year's budgets or in the other agencies to which they were assigned. CPO is a new office. We think that this is a fundamentally different, more efficient, and ultimately more effective way of doing this business.
I agree.
To your point, and, I'm glad to hear you agree. As a result, you know, we think that the performance measures that we'll be using, the key performance indicators for CPO are going to be materially different from whatever was used for rebuild and the different component organizations in the past. So we are absolutely going to be making sure, as we build out CPO and consolidate it, get it moving forward together, we will have performance measures, and it will be assessed to that agency like all others through Philly Stat 360.
I think this is probably the most important office that we have in our city, because it deals with the physical infrastructure and what our kids see daily. You look at our rec centers, I have probably, I don't know, may have the most rec centers out of all council members, right? And, you know, rebuild has essentially stalled in my district, and we're just trying to figure out answers on why. Like, we have a program for the CCB rec center that's supposed to be demolished and a brand-new rec center being built, but that program has stalled because of costs and a bunch of other things. And I just don't want to let bureaucracy get in the way of the things that we actually need to improve our communities. And my last question is regarding the Office of the Victims Advocate. Essentially, the Police Commissioner, you know, proposed, and I listened to the line of questioning that the Council President was asking, but the Police Commissioner, you know, proposed this idea that they are asking for money for, to be more responsive to victims. So how can we ensure that there isn't any redundancy with the Office of Victim Advocates, with the new proposed efforts of the police, with their ask for, for money to address the victims?
Yeah, I think as contemplated, and thank you for the question, as contemplated, the individuals who the police, who will be working in the police department will be working very closely with their homicide detectives, and will almost be like managing or caseworkers for the co-victims of those homicide cases. So the difference there, I think the critical difference, is there a level of access to the information as it relates to the cases, the specific cases and families from each of these homicide unfortunate incidences. So they'll be able to have direct contact with those detectives, understand where they are at the cases, be able to answer those questions, things that aren't necessarily in the direct purview or closer control of our Office of the Victim Advocate. I will take a step back, though, and say that there is a tremendous amount of work that we can be doing here overall. So this is a very welcome, I think, ask, and I think it'll go a long way to showing how we actually feel and care and deal with members of our community who are dealing with literally the worst thing that's happened in their lives, right? So I think they're going to be working together. You've already heard how Ms. Combs operates in terms of building connections with other victim advocacy groups. So I don't think that there will be, I think they'll be able to find their lanes, and it's going to be very successful operation inside the police department.
Thank you. I'll wait for the second round for my next question, Mr. President. Thank you. What are we doing, or how, what strategies as the administration contemplating regarding the spread of, or the dissemination of information to communities that are outside of the Kensington area regarding the plans, right? Because I know you're speaking to folks in Kensington who are directly affected. But we see that when, when there is concentrated enforcement, those folks are just going to spread around and move, right? So what are we doing in those outlined neighborhoods and communities to help those communities prepare for what is possibly to come?
I can tell you, in speaking to Commissioner Rosario, that they are aware, right? They've already, they are aware that any actions that they may have lead, may lead to individuals going to other areas, right, that are either close by or other areas of the city. That is part of their plan. I don't want to speak for them, but I know that they are aware of that. We have been receiving reports of an individual here or there who may be leaving that Kensington Allegheny quarter, and he is made aware of that, and they are dealing with that and making that a part of the plan. So I can't speak to the communications largely in terms of what specifically we might be messaging to people, but I will say that if there is any information that we're receiving from the public, we're taking that and doing something with it.
And Councilmember, I'll just add from a kind of a Health and Human Services perspective, it's an important point that you're making. We are building, the system that we are building is to serve the entire city and with Kensington as a priority. So we are starting in Kensington, I think we've been very clear about that, and we know that the ultimate system that we are building for long-term care, treatment, and housing has to be citywide and potentially beyond, because people move around.
And I'm just going back to my original question I had probably from the first day. Will a plan for the $100 million capital ask be in place before we conclude this budget process?
Councilmember, Council President, that is a very reasonable question. The short answer is yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Took my question. I ain't had nothing to say. Now, I was, we're in the second round, just following up on Councilmember Jeffrey Young. We just look forward to the actual plan, just so we can talk about the actual details, locations. And I think as we wrap up the budget process, folks have their questions answered, so thank you for the short, direct response. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you again, Director Teals and Gier, for your responses so far. I wanted to continue on a line of questioning that I had. This is actually publicly accessible information, but can you just state for the record, how much is MDO budgeting in operating dollars for the triage and wellness centers?
Councilmember, Council President, we do not have general fund operating dollars in the proposed FY '25 budget to operate the sort of triage and wellness system that we're talking about. Because at the same time that we are doing all the things that we've talked about, we are working with payers and providers to understand what the impediments are, what the opportunities are to having the healthcare system and having the payment mechanisms that already exist pay for some of this care. So we are doing those convenings with insurance providers, with the healthcare systems, so we don't actually know that net.
Forgive me, Director Teal, the information that I had, and I could be totally wrong, was that this was accessible information, that you all had $3 million for FY '24 and $1.5 million for FY '25? Is that not accurate?
We have, we have money in FY '24.
Okay.
Reallocated dollars that we are using for this initial work. So we are, obviously, we are needing to, you know, hire people and do work now, so in FY '24, we have money for, again, seed money. Similarly, the $100 million capital investment is also seed money, as we're trying to build out a broader capital stack to be able to deal with the capital aspects of this.
Is that, is that the $5 million? Like a $5 million figure? Is the $5 million in the budget? Is that, is that, is that what we're speaking to here?
No, it's, I think it's.
I don't want to hold up.
Well, the FY '24 is up to, yes, okay, so $5 million in FY '24 that's reallocated. And again, it might be, we have multiple pots of reallocated money.
Gotcha.
That we're trying to use to accelerate this work.
And you were saying, that's like moving, there's not a lot of cuts, there's a lot of moving around.
Yes, sir, that's correct. These are from other programs that underspent.
Understood.
And also, there was some money moved into our budget by finance for mayoral priorities.
Understood.
That we are using for this. That was around $6.7 million.
Understood. And because I'm green, make sure, let me make sure I understand this. Will this all be Class 200 funds for contract services? Is that how they'll be?
Well, the, Councilmember, the, the money we have in FY '24 is largely Class 200 money to accelerate this work. The dollars in FY '25 and beyond are capital dollars, and we're hoping to get non-general fund sources to pay for whatever the operational wraparound is, that ends up being the responsibility of the city to make this whole thing work.
Got you. Is it true that MDO has not yet determined, as of now, which vendors will manage or oversee the triage and wellness centers? Which vendors?
Councilmember, that is largely, I think, the bottom line, the way that you phrase that question is, it is, yes, it is true that we have not yet determined the ultimate ecosystem of providers that are going to be helping us with this work.
Yes, sir.
We are talking with a lot of people.
Thank you very much. And what is the expectation for what the funding will actually get us, that I've already asked about? Specifically, how many centers will be operated? What specific services will be offered at the centers? And how many employees will be needed? Any of that information available?
Councilmember, the short answer is, is as much as we can get.
Okay.
Again, we simply don't know, because some of this, there has not been a market for, so we are kind of charting new ground for the medium to long-term components. The short-term piece, we are meeting with people, getting proposals every day.
Yes.
And trying to understand how to make this initial, these initial dollars get us through the balance of FY '24.
Yes, sir.
While at the same time, we're talking with insurance providers, healthcare systems, and other providers about how we can make existing payment mechanisms work, and also talking with philanthropic partners, talking with other folks about other funding streams that might help us do this.
Thank you very much. Just one more try. How will only five, you know what? Let me just state, I- How will only five, you know what, let me just state, I, as I understand, I think you mentioned earlier that you almost lost your life in the line of duty in Kensington. And I am sorry to hear that news. I wanted to affirm that for those who are doing the hard work there. I, I should say that my line of questioning comes from a spirit of recognizing that there's, I don't think that anyone is under any illusions, that there's a question around how to address the question of Kensington in and of itself. I think that's unilaterally kind of agreed upon. The concern has been about the method and the way by which we approach that. And so while I do know that there are those who are committed even in this body and beyond to approaching it one way, it will always be my call to make sure that, that, that there's a compassionate approach. And compassion doesn't just mean putting the work and passion over an detailed plan and then executing that plan without any regard for the impacts. Compassion is a materialist analysis. It's addressing the actual method, the rollout, what are the numbers, what are the details? Where do these things exist? What do we mean by beds? All of that is what allows us to realize what compassion looks like and thereby save as much life and improve the quality of life for all those who will go into it. I had some more questions around immigrant affairs as well as OEM that I maybe will submit for the record, because I know this is the second round. But I thank you for your transparency in this. The idea, again, is to make sure that we are ensuring quality of life and that we're doing this the right way, so it doesn't become a tragedy in the making because we weren't thorough in our preparations and in the way that we rolled it out. Thank you very much.
Councilmember, we agree.
Yeah, thank you. Remember, just a quick question. So we, 100 million for the actual capital on a triage centers, correct?
Council President...
As seed money to build, to build out, right?
Yes, sir.
So let's say we have XY building, and part of that 100 will go to retrofitting and making sure the building is right-sized for bringing in patients. Are we depending solely on private sources for the actual operations of the actual facility?
Council President, it's a great question. We are trying to build this in a self-sustaining way. We're trying to build this system in a self-sustaining way with the mayor's bold vision to catalyze this. We've not seen anybody else doing that.
We all agree.
We don't want to be dependent on any one source, so we're trying to get...
Just hear me out. We all on board. We get the mayor's plan. Safer, cleaner, greener, city with economic opportunity for everybody. We are all on board with that. All right. We're just talking some specifics, because we get questions, and we gotta do our fiscal due diligence, right? To make sure what we're signing off on is detailed and accurate for the people who sent us here. So just wanted to get the other aspect of, once the capital is done and we have the buildings and they're right-sized and you're ready to bring in all the people that we're gonna help comprehensively, because we're gonna help these people, we're gonna clean up Kensington, but then somebody has to actually do the operation. Somebody have to be the counselors, somebody have to be the therapist, somebody have to do the medical, and as of right now, there is no funding to do that aspect. That will, as they say, you build it, then they will come. I just wanted to get clarity on it. Is that what we're saying?
Council President, I think the short answer is yes, and as we are continuing to move forward through this planning process in a very dynamic environment, we will have answers for our initial approach for you before the end of the budget process, even as we continue to hope that we can actually change the game here in Philadelphia that is currently being played and is leaving our communities and patients frankly left holding the bag.
We support that as well, and again, I'm an advocate of the Kensington Caucus. Matter of fact, we just did a bill on behalf of Ketsley Lozada for the Special Committee on Kensington, but always the devil's in the details and making sure we're doing our due diligence. And so those were the questions that come to my mind, listening to you and also listening to the line of questioning of Councilmember Horwart. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Maed.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Council President. I have a question about the Animal Care and Control Team. You know, they're the only resource we have in Philadelphia. That just amazes me, and, you know, they do great work. So I wanted to ask, in their FY25 strategic goal, they have a community outreach goal saying, increase outreach in the community to proactively address the disparities facing pet owners that are resulting in more animals coming to the shelter. Is there a specific outreach program with resources that will help people keep their animals? That's one. And two is, when we're doing this Kensington sweep, what is going to, a lot of people have animals, right? And listen, animals are a therapeutic measure for us. It is a mental health resource, having a pet. So it's very important we understand how we're dealing with that issue when that crops up.
Councilmember, Council President, appreciate the question, and again, it just goes to show the complexities of what we're trying to do here. It is another facet of this that we need to be considering and understanding. Agreed that our Animal Care and Control Team is incredibly dedicated. We're thankful for the work they do. We wish there was more capacity there. We constantly talk with them, and we can certainly get you examples of some of their outreach and educational materials.
So the question is, is there any money? That's what it'll take for people to buy their pet food, to get their pet to the vet. Is there any maybe public-private venture to do that, to really support? Because I don't think we should underestimate the role animals, pets play in our lives, and so it would behoove us to actually have some focus on this and not just be an add-on as a side thing. This can, this can stop people from going to treatment. This, not knowing how their animal will get treated, will stop people from going to treatment. So it's really important that we take this seriously because people who love animals, have animals, those are family members. They are, they're our four-legged family members. They could be two-legged too, but... So I just wondered that we should put some emphasis on this, if we're going to be holistic in really wanting success for people to go into these programs and really get some help.
Councilmember, again, we agree as we've been meeting with folks, a lot of different folks during the design, again, remember, we're designing a system and structures that don't exist and designing facilities. We've heard that from folks with lived experience and other things that we're trying to include in facilities design and also in all of the work streams that play into that, transportation. How do you handle transportation? How do you take care of things? We heard some of this earlier. All of those, all of those factors are important and, to your point, can have a, can have influence on whether or not somebody comes in for treatment. And so, yes, again, this, I think, shows the complexity of what we're trying to do here.
My next question is about the Anti-Violence Community Grants Program, which is slated for 24 million. So are there any specific new initiatives or changes in the program since the evaluation last year? And will the same organizations be awarded the grants, or is there a new RFP process? And is there inclusion of mental health resources? And I asked this question of DBH yesterday, and I did not get a clear answer whether things like CBT are going to be included along with the actual program. They may or may not have the resources for themselves to offer that. Will we have DBH be part of it, or, you know, Community Behavior Health looking into who can join up in order to make these programs really effective? I do believe that CBT was something, I believe Joshua Harris had just given us information prior, I can't remember when he gave it, but he said that CBT was getting included in some of the anti-violence works. I just wanted to know where it fits, who's paying for it, how, how does it actually get tabulated and counted to see what success looks like with these programs?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. We, yes, that is the, an important part of, I think, when our, when we're giving our grants out, right? Frankly, I think we would need to, through particularly this Director of Performance Management, put into place a better, right, more robust way of understanding how this plays into our grantees, because we do think that it is incredibly important to our work. We, as an office, understand that dealing with trauma directly relates to reducing gun violence and violent crimes, period. So that is going to be a, a part of our, of our work, and we will do a better job of trying to understand what that is. So in terms of getting specifics, in terms of the numbers of CBT and how much that is actually into our program, we'd have to get that back to you.
So at the moment, you don't really have that as a requirement of some mental health resources for anti-violence programs?
So as part of our GVI program, yes, we do have a specific component for that.
So we could get numbers into which, which nonprofit is getting the funding and what is their mental health plan?
I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay. And the last question is about Office of Victims Advocate. I wanted to know, I know there's a, DAO has one and PPD has a resource as well. Who's actually, I believe DAO is supposed to be the one who paid for the funeral expenses and other actual resources. Is, is our office here doing that as well, and what is the coordination? And sometimes when, you know, I've sat with grief-stricken families, there, this is so much going on, and to have three resources coming to them and none of them giving them actual resources is the, is the fear I have, right? So it sounds good, we do this, but where's the coordination with all the, all the different places who are coming into that family's home when they're sitting and grieving?
Good afternoon, Mr. Combs, answer that question.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Maed. And I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. You're asking that as the services through my office are disseminated to support survivors of crime and co-victims of homicide, that we're not duplicating the services already available through the District Attorney's Office?
I mean, duplication might mean more services, more money, but funeral resources, you know, replacing income, all of those things. I don't know exactly how much a family gets currently without your office, and does that change when your office is in the picture?
So to be clear, victims of crime and the co-victims of homicide are provided reimbursement-based funds through the state. So that is the same entity that the District Attorney's Office, the Victim Service Agency's, my office connects victims to by way of helping them file for those claims or providing them information in terms of how to file directly. So just to be clear, that information, that funding all comes from state funding through the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, through the Victims in Crime Act, through Voca funding.
So we are not putting any money in this outside of staffing this, correct?
That, but to be clear, there's also additional things that are needed, such as the relocation support, such as the crime scene remediation. So there is additional funding coming from the city to, in a way, fill the gaps and complement what isn't available through the state, because all of that funding is, like I said first, reimbursement-based, which assumes that folks have that money on the front end to pay for stuff, which we all know is inaccurate and not rooted into reality of our city. But also, the funding levels are not indicative of how much things actually cost in real life, as opposed to maybe how much they cost 20 years ago. So we are complementing the things that are available, but we are in no way adding money where money is already in existence to those folks.
So just last clarification, when PCCY does this, you know, reimbursement, who gives, for a family who doesn't have that, right, how do they operate? Like, what happens then?
So to make sure I understand your question, so when folks apply for support through the state, they're able to get money for medical expenses, for certain relocation under a certain amount, for certain instances that qualify for crime scene cleanup inside of the home up to a certain amount, for lost wages, as well as counseling services, and a number of other things that are available through the Voca fund. But like I said, in addition to that, the money that we request, whether that be for relocation services, as well as some funding that we have previously requested to help folks with funeral expenses, is to do exactly that, to make sure that folks that don't have the money to pay the above amount from what the state offers are able to take care of that. So there's a lot of money needed to support those families that cannot be supplied by the state, because as I stated earlier, that money is being cut. So we're looking to make sure that Philadelphians don't feel that burden by adding funds to that.
Thank you. That clarifies things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome, Councilmember Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. I just have a really quick question. As we work to restore quality of life in Kensington, we've heard you say many times that partners are gonna be necessary. Community residents have expressed some concern and some challenges around some of the partners that we currently have on the ground. While we understand that harm reduction work is extremely important in order to be able to connect folks with resources, what are we doing to better coordinate specifically the mobile units that oftentimes park in residential blocks? Kind of drawing folks off of the commercial corridor and onto residential neighborhoods and really impacting how residents move in and out of their homes?
Councilmember, Council President, you know, you raised an important point, and I want to be clear about this as well. There are a lot of folks who are doing lifesaving work across the city and Kensington and elsewhere. And, you know, we want that work to continue. We think there's still gonna be a need for it. To be really clear, we all understand and appreciate the importance of harm reduction, and we know that that alone is not enough, which is why we are here and why we are reallocating resources and putting new resources into building out the rest of the system, the medium and the long-term parts of the system. We are meeting, we've been meeting with existing providers and making sure that they understand that there is a new standard, the way, they need to do things differently, to make sure that they are also considering, in addition to the patients and the folks they serve, that they are considering the community and the neighborhood impacts. That is not something that I had heard as being a problem, and we will absolutely take that back and help ensure that there is better coordination for where those mobile units are going and what they're doing. So I appreciate you raising that. Again, this is the type of thing, as we were talking about, not just with 311, but this is the coordination capability that we're trying to build 24/7 to make sure that things like that are addressed in a more cohesive way and a community-centered way. So I appreciate you raising that, and we will go back and talk to those folks and make sure that that's being done better.
Let me recommend that you meet with tough Kensington neighbors for Better Living, because we've had two meetings with the past administration, specifically with Noel and others, who, where they have expressed serious concern around mobile providers, and the agreement was that we would have them coordinate amongst themselves, which created a bigger issue. So it is gonna be extremely important for us to actually take the lead. Again, we recognize that the work is extremely important. We just need to make sure that we are not reducing harm for one population while increasing harm for another. I believe, that was my last question, Councilmember. I just needed to make sure that I put that on the record. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember, oh, she left. Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. A couple of things. Prisons, we have a new prisons commissioner, so I didn't want to burden a new commissioner with too much, but prisons, based on the flowchart, will fall under you all, specifically the Managing Director's Office. What, what, what should we be doing to ensure some of the issues that we're seeing at the prison gets addressed? What is your vision? Do you believe the current advisory board is capable of providing meaningful oversight? And based on a lawsuit that we've seen, the court-appointed independent monitors... And based on a lawsuit that we've seen, the court-appointed independent monitors, that tactic might not be working. So how long do we expect these current problems to exist? What are we doing as it relates to the independent monitors? Do you feel like the over, the advisory board is an effective way to do oversight and the overall plan to improve safety with our prisons?
Councilmember, Council President, I appreciate you asking the questions. Clearly, prisons and improving conditions in our prisons is a priority for Mayor Parker, which is why we've hired a new commissioner, Commissioner Resnick. He starts on April 22nd, and he certainly has the, coming in, I will, I will frame it as a positive, the benefit of a lot of information around things that need to be done. And I want to be very clear, too, the folks who are working in our Philadelphia Department of Prisons are incredibly dedicated. They are providing a 24/7, 365 service. They are understaffed and under-resourced. There are items throughout this five-year plan, capital items to both improve conditions and improve security at our prisons facilities. There are items in here to provide Commissioner Resnick with the resources that he is going to need to build a team, to provide professional development, to restore the morale, and of course, ultimately to restore the staffing complement of PDP. Right now, they have, I think, still have 50 candidates who are in to be correctional officers. We, we need folks. These are very important jobs, and I'll repeat for folks who are watching, philadelphia.gov/jobs, we are hiring for correctional officers. So we're looking at frankly, every aspect of the prison's operation with the benefit of these different resources that you've talked about, and we're going to let Commissioner Resnick get in.
The advisory.
Start getting it done. You know, I can't, I think we're going to let, we will let Commissioner Resnick assess the advisory board and assess the staff. And now, to be clear, that's, again, we're not going to spend, we are already taking action, so we are not waiting for Commissioner Resnick to come, which is why you see so many different investments in PDP here. We are working with Local 159, negotiating with them on their contract. I think you saw during the announcement of Commissioner Resnick, you saw incredibly enthusiastic support from Local 159 there in the room. I think everybody's excited about Commissioner Resnick coming on board, and we're going to give him a minute, in just a minute, to take stock and move forward, and we've given him the resources in this budget, thanks to the mayor, to start getting things done and changing conditions.
Somebody who's maybe been around a little while then, if you can give us something in writing on that advisory board, what is the mayor's position as it relates to the advisory board, and how effective do we think the board is or isn't? Clearly, my staff have been talking about possible legislation to look at a different type of oversight. So we want to know where the mayor's opinion is, know what's working, what's not working, as we craft that legislation throughout the course of the year. I want to change directions. Under the Managing Director's Office, you have the Office of Children and Families, and I have to give Ms. Vanessa a huge shout-out. She's amazing. A pleasure to work with over the last couple of years, advocating and dealing with young people. You have a concept that you're introducing called the Sports Fund. I'm assuming that's going to come under the Managing Director's Office, correct?
Councilmember, if it's in the Office of Children and Families, it is located in the Managing Director's Office.
So I'm not sure, that's why I'm asking. Is it going to be under the Office of Children and Families? Is it going to be under the Managing Director's Office?
I think we're currently conceiving that as being in the Office of Children and Families.
Awesome. That would be great. I just want to put a shameless plug in for myself and other members of council. We've been advocating for years for the city to create a sports fund. We actually use the cultural fund as an example, looking at what we do with the cultural fund for arts and culture, which is an amazing thing. We've been advocating for the same thing for sports. I could hear Councilmember Jones's speeches in my head about track and field. I know the council president was on the Appropriations Committee last year, where he fought for money for South Philly organizations. I've advocated for Philly Legendary Hoops Month. For the first time ever, we gave money to Pop Warner Football. So I'm wondering, number one, what is the plan to have council included in this initiative? And number two, is it only for young people, or is it for adult-based sports? And number three, with this sports fund being in place, will this impact other advocacy efforts and initiatives that we've had in the past to provide city grants and resources to sports-based programming?
Councilmember, Council President, I think, working backwards, I think we certainly hope that there will be additional dollars from multiple sources to help support youth sports across the city. As far as the specific configuration and the priorities of that program, you know, I think those are still under development.
So I don't, I would want us to know what that is going to consist of before we vote for it.
We can, yeah, we can certainly.
Because at the end of the day, it could put us in a position where organizations that's been getting funded for the city by years may now be disqualified because we created a sports fund. And let's say the sports fund's only for children, and you decide that all sports money must go through the sports fund and is only for youth-based sports programming. That would eliminate some of the other initiatives that we've already put in place that are phenomenal programs and events. The last thing I'll say, because I heard the bell, and I do want to commend Adam, Adam Greer, right? Greer. I want to commend Adam, because he's already hit the ground running with some of this stuff, but it's important that we put it on the record. I love the position, I love the work you're doing. We've had a number of high-profile homicides in the city of Philadelphia this year in 2024, and we talk all the time about how insensitive it is to hit the reset button. But as government, you know, that's how we function. I'm sure we, I know for a fact we had high-profile homicides in the years to come, but looking at this administration's priority and focus on not just cleaner and greener, but a safer Philadelphia, just as I close out, this is my last thing, Council President, can you talk to us a little bit about your plan to address people's perception of our city? While we can talk about the data and numbers, they are trending in the right direction. I'm not going to say that the work isn't being done, but the perception isn't reflective of the data. So when we have a high-profile homicide, especially when it's caught on camera, we have no arrests, we have no nothing, it, it, it doesn't, that, those incidents do not help the perception issues that we have, and they don't match the data and the direction that the city is trending in. So what is your plan and what is your vision to attack this perception problem? Because at the end of the day, we have a lot coming up in the next couple of years, and we want people, not just in Philadelphia, but people who visit Philadelphia, to know that our city is safe.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. It is much appreciated, because when, when we go out sometimes to these scenes and we drive through these communities, and we know this from the data, right, the individuals who are committing these crimes are dropping the bucket compared to the beautiful, hard-working, lovely Philadelphians that we see on our way to these scenes, right? They are the small, small, small fraction of who we are as Philadelphia. To answer your question, I know the department, the police department, is going to be very intentional about their rebranding efforts. They brought someone on to help translate some of that on, on their side. But as a city, I think we're already doing some of that work, right? We've talked about this, we've talked about council's leadership.
I want to be clear, because I, I gave you credit for doing the work. I'm not questioning the work on this one, right? This is a perception thing. So I, I don't, I, I know firsthand, based on meetings, based on budget hearings, based on data, the work is being done. I'm not questioning the work. But if you talk to people who are not necessarily in Philadelphia, who are thinking about coming here, if you attended our meeting last night, what did they tell us last night, Council President? The old, the elders feel trapped in their neighborhood, right? I heard somebody say, "We need a program for elders because they feel trapped in their neighborhood." Now, I'm not saying that these elders are literally trapped, but clearly there's a perception out there right now that's not reflective of the work. So I'm more concerned about the perception than the actual work, because I know that you're doing the work. I've seen it firsthand.
Councilmember, Council President, we really appreciate it and agree 100%. I mean, you know, I know people from a lot of different places, as do you, and there are, there's this mismatch between perception and reality. One of our very first meetings, I think it was on like day two, with the mayor and our cabinet, our entire cabinet, was with all of the convention and business entities, the Chamber, Visit Philly, CVB, all of those folks, to essentially attack this problem that you're talking about head-on. We know the mayor hates, I'm not even going to say that term, that is part of safer, cleaner and greener. So I think we have heard so much from so many people as we move around the city. We've heard, we were at another meeting recently with the mayor, where someone who had been planning to move their business said, "Because of you, Mayor Parker, and your energy, enthusiasm and positivity and optimism, I decided to keep my business here and reinvest." We've heard people, I was down in South Philly, a woman who was saying, "Oh, I was moving to Florida, but now, thanks to Mayor Parker," because we are seeing it, people are seeing it, they're seeing it, touching it, feeling it. It's going to take more of that, it's going to take more of our consistent execution of this vision and strategy across all of our departments, Commerce, huge, you know, Alba Martinez. So I think it's going to take all of us, and I am thankful that we have the best cheerleader that anybody could, and Mayor Parker, because we got, we have a lot going on, a lot coming, and as she says, companies coming. So we're, we're enthusiastic about this and closing that gap between perception and reality.
That's it, member, but I do want to concur. I think the energy of our former colleague, right, sets that tone. Coming outside after a homicide with all the key partners, standing up saying, "We're not taking it anymore, and enough is enough." I think that also plays a role in the psyche of the people, that somebody's care, it's a new day. And so I do concur those sentiments of our mayor stepping up to the plate and saying, "We're going to grab this issue and address it firmly." I'm going to acknowledge Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. While these robust hearings were going on, I was listening, multitasking in my office. Two quick things. One, the, since the Kensington Caucus came on board, I've seen progress. The mayor was out at Calmly like three times, like making the center of the universe the Kensington issue ground zero. So for that, as an honorary member of the Kensington Caucus, I am thankful that finally, after all of these administrations, we're looking at Kensington as a priority. So I'm thankful for that. But number two, by way of perception, I was up with a group of law enforcement officers up in, right, you couldn't go any further and not be in Bucks County than we were. And these are very conservative kind of regional prosecutors, and they were clapping for our mayor, saying, "Finally, there's somebody who can balance criminal justice reform with public safety, that they don't have to be or, they can be and." So I want us to, you know, I know it's 100 days, we like instant grits, we want everything quick, but everything doesn't happen quick. And sometimes it takes a while for you to take these inheritances from other administrations in order to be able to right the ship. So I just want to throw your spug, I agree with a member, Thomas, we like what you're doing, want to keep you in the loop of effectiveness, and I just want to say thank you for the perception that it is getting better. Like actually, whether you talk to those law enforcement people or people sitting on the porch in my district, there's a sense that, and I don't want to call her Auntie Sherelle, but, but she's like the stern aunt that comes in the house, "Boy, pull your pants up, this is not how we do it here," kind of thing, and it's, it is said with love, but firmness, and it's a combination of both. That's all I had to say, Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rulandau.
Thank you. I had to leave to speak to a college class. They were very interested in hearing about these budget testimonies. Two questions that are not connected at all. One is about conforming contracts, and I know you talked about it a little bit in the beginning of your time here, but we've just heard complaint after complaint about how long it takes to conform contracts and also to get payments to people. So everyone from a court-appointed counsel to even shelters who testified yesterday, to, when I spoke to them in February, I took a note that it was taking 54 days to conform a contract. We've heard it from the larger nonprofits that are helping to fund the smaller ones, and each individual ones as well, like, is it all going through you? Is it all going through one person or one entity? And how can we fix it? How's that moving?
Councilmember, I appreciate the question. Those, most of that actually doesn't come through the Managing Director's Office at all. So most of that is done by other parts of city government. You know, we can certainly have folks, you know, in procurement law and other parts of city government, you know, circle back with you on, on some of that. The parts that we do have equities in are sometimes mitigating risks, sometimes, you know, devoting additional capacity. You know, my sense from working here for a little while is those agencies I just mentioned are under-resourced like many others, they have vacancies. I, I see a lot of hard-working people everywhere in city government trying to get this stuff done, and at the same time, we have these challenges and we're not doing what any of us want to do, particularly the folks where this is their job, their 100% job, we're not doing as well as we would all like. So I think this is also part of our initiatives to make business operate more smoothly. You know, it's tough to do business with the city if you're, you know, you're not getting paid. The mayor announced yesterday a lot of great things that are going to be happening for businesses. I think part of it will be navigating through existing city processes, because some of this, in my experience, is that there's a lot of back and forth when you're trying to do this inside and outside city government. So that's not necessarily in our, in our lane to get that done. We are, in certain cases, I mentioned, with our capital program office, providing resources from the Managing Director's Office to other agencies like law, to give them additional capacity to work on, you know, our projects, your projects, to work on capital projects and other things. So we're looking at that, how this work gets done. Rest assured, the mayor is keenly interested in this. Our, our colleagues in the mayor's office, our big three are working very hard on this, our CAO, a lot of people understand these challenges, we know we need to fix it. We are a, you know, a piece of that too, but a relatively small piece.
Okay. Okay. That's, I'll figure out how to do the follow-up on that one. And then the second question was about arts and culture. I am upset to see that I believe there's a $2 million cut in the Office of Arts, Culture and the Creative Economy, and that there's not going to be any more of the illuminating the arts grants. Arts helps with community development, youth engagement, cleaning and greening, public safety. Tell me it's not true, and would love to know, like, why, why, why that would happen? The arts is one of the things, especially for our youth on the ground, that is keeping them engaged and making Philadelphia beautiful, and, and it's an economic engine.
Councilmember, our Arts and Culture is no longer in the Managing Director's Office. We, we have a new, a new director for that, and again, part of the mayor's commitment, because the mayor absolutely agrees that arts, arts and culture is important. In fact, she believes it's so important that our new director reports directly to the mayor, so we can have them circle back to explain exactly what the city's investment in that is, and how we as a city are going to continue to do that work, albeit organized in a slightly different way.
Okay. Should I ask, I should ask another question that's not in your department, so I can strike out?
We, we, we are, well, to be clear, Councilmember, we're not, I'm not punting, we will make sure that we will get somebody to get you an answer back, okay?
I fully understand. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Very briefly, and thank you, Councilmember Landau, for bringing up that issue. I just want to assure that we have the Office of Creative Economy come before this committee. I'm not sure if with the restructuring, they fit the $5 million budget requirement, but if they don't, we would love them to come before the committee to answer questions that Councilmember Landau just presented, as well as other questions related to the Arts and Culture space.
I will make the request.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Landau.
You're welcome. Before we wrap, we have our last two, wrap this round up and break. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey Young, and then we have Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke, and then that's a wrap.
Thank you, Mr. President. My questions are along the lines of special events. We just had WrestleMania here in the city, which I think did wonders for our, for our city, but, you know, city, but, you know, we have events all the time on a parkway that, you know, I, being a new council member, that was one of the first things that folks kind of embarrased me with, is parkway events. And there's a lot of seniors that live around the parkway and some senior facilities who, who need access to just the amenities that the parkway, and the things around the parkway offer, but during special events, they just, they cannot get there. So I was wondering if there's ways where we can temporarily change, like, street directions or something during these events to allow for access for certain seniors to get in and around their communities, because a lot of one-way streets are there, and streets are blocked off, so they, they have, they have no access, they're kind of landlocked in their facilities and aren't able to, to, to move around their, their communities where there are special events. So could you speak to, I guess, what the city's plan is during special events on a parkway, and how we can, I guess, mitigate those issues that those community members, those seniors have that live around a parkway area?
Councilmember, council president, appreciate the question and, and understand the concerns. It's always a balancing act to be able to have these major events with more coming, while recognizing that the community still needs to be able to get where they're going and be able to have, you know, their, their quality of life. So a lot of that coordination comes out of our Office of Special Events, and Giselle Jones, also our city representative, they do some of that, our Office of Emergency Management, streets. Rest assured, there is a very elaborate and detailed planning process for all of these events to try to balance safety, security and access, you know, all the time, and we know that sometimes that can be, sometimes it is very difficult to, to do both of those things. I think to the, we actually do some of that, we do, you know, sometimes close a street but provide access for residents, sometimes train, change the way streets run. If there are specifics, we'd be happy to take specifics, specific examples of events and buildings and folks that didn't necessarily have access, and, and get that into our planning stream for these upcoming events, some of which, and I think it's an important point as well, the scale and scope, we are used to big events, the scale and scope of some of the events that we have coming in 2026 are going to be, you know, hearken back to the Papal Visit as maybe the, the last biggest thing, the DNC that we did in 2016. We are already doing a lot of planning for 2026, working back through today. So we'd be happy to take specific examples from your office, so we can do what we can to work that into the planning.
Thank you. Just for the record, I want to note that I used to be Giselle's intern in the Managing Director's Office many moons ago, so I'm very familiar with the process, actually, with special events, so, but thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And wrapping up, the Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, council president, thank you, Councilman Young, for recognizing WrestleMania and the great city of Philadelphia. I just had two quick questions, and I thank council president for the time. Starting in November of 2022, Philadelphia welcomed its first bus of individuals seeking asylum. Since then, we have received 71 buses sent from Texas and 2,900 people seeking asylum. Proud of Philadelphia's commitment to become, to being and maintaining itself as a welcoming city, which has looked like meeting folks with open arms, helping them find stability in Philly, or assisting them in getting to their final destination. In light of the upcoming presidential election, it's important that we get clear about how we will continue to fund and support this critical work. It looks like we spent 5.3 million last year for migrant busing and to, and to operate the Welcome Center, but does, but it does not look like there are any appropriated funds for this work in FY '25. That being said, if the practice of busing migrants to Philadelphia by some wayward governors in this union reemerges, is the city prepared to receive them with this current budget?
Councilmember, council president, I think the short answer to that is, it depends. Obviously, we don't control that flow. We don't control the, the mode, or the timing, or the number of folks, that is completely somewhere else, and as you might imagine, we don't have a lot of influence on that, the other end of that pipeline. So our team, and it's a, it's an amazing team that does that, our Office of Immigrant Affairs, our OEM, a lot of other partners, we, we are able to handle the flow as it stands right now. If that changes significantly, then the good news is, we know how to do this. We did it with Operation Allies Welcome, which is something a lot of folks forget about, or believe that was somebody else's job. The reality was, Operation Allies Welcome was done largely by the City of Philadelphia and Department of Defense partners and others. So we know how to scale, and we will have to find the resources to do that, we will have to have our colleagues in finance do that. And there have recently been some federal funding streams that, that we may be able to tap for some of that work, depending on how much it ramps up.
To that, is funding continuing for Pennsylvania Immigrant Unity Family Project, which helps immigrants with legal defense? Do you know about that?
I, I don't, we can certainly come back to you with an answer to that.
Please do.
About that specific program.
Thank you very, very much. And I had a question for OEM. We have certainly seen the busy and broad nature of emergency management, especially as natural disasters become more extreme and human-made disasters illuminate the limits of our current systems. I should say, I believe you were the one that handled the snow removal and all of that in the city, about a week or two into you in this administration, is that correct? Commendations to you for that work. OEM has responded to a number of unprecedented crises over the last few years, and federal funds and several grant-funded initiatives have allowed OEM to operate with agility. Can you describe the expected impacts due to the loss of this funding?
Councilmember, working backwards, the, a huge inter-agency team, those are the ones who actually did the work of the snow removal. So I want to give a shout out of so many different agencies, I'm not going to list them in the interest of time. All I basically did was say, maybe we should have a call. So I appreciate that. I also want to appreciate Tiffany Thurmond, our mayor's chief of staff, who really helped with some of that. And I also, I want to be clear that the, the last time I was almost killed in the line of duty was because I was standing too close to a building that used to be in Kensington, and only thanks to some of our real professionals in the Philadelphia Fire Department did I survive. So we, we pulled back just in time, that I was not, the fire commissioner should not be that close to a building, so that was my fault. The Officer Emergency Management, so as a former director, temporary three-year director of OEM, very important agency, they do, to your point, are often right there when unexpected things happen, whatever those might be. Phone call that we're going to start having folks from Afghanistan showing up in, in 27 to 30 hours. OEM does have access to funding resources, federal funding resources, regional grants. We are not going to let OEM fail, because they have never let us fail. So we are going to do what, what needs to be done to ensure that all that critical work continues, regardless of where those dollars are coming from, whether they're coming from the general fund in one place or another place in the general fund, we need to maintain the capacity and capability we have in OEM. One of the challenges we have, and we're looking at this holistically across city government, is also retention. You know, we, there's, there's no better place in the country arguably to learn emergency management than here in Philadelphia. That's a good thing, and the other thing at the same time, we've been tested, those folks have risen to the occasion, most of them can go write their ticket somewhere else. We all understand that, we know that's true of so many different city employees, so we're looking at compensation, recruitment and retention out of our CAO and our Office of Human Resources. So, you know, we're going to, we're not, I, I am not concerned about losing our capabilities in OEM with, with what's in the budget, we, we, we got it.
Thank you very much, and thank you, council president.
Thank you. I want to thank both of you for your testimony. As a body, we look forward to continue working in partnership with the administration as we move this state of Philadelphia forward. And so, thank you, and this hearing stands in recess until 2:00 PM.